Good evening and welcome to the June 10th meeting of the zoning board of appeals here at a Zoom Town Hall for what we hope to be is one last time. In accordance with the governor's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law due to coronavirus. This public meeting of the Falmouth zoning board of appeals is physically closed to the public in order to avoid group congregation. There are alternative public access measures in place. The meeting is being televised as is customary through Falmouth Community Television, FCTV. And real time public comment can be addressed to the zoning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This app allows users to view the meeting in real time and send a question or comment when the time in the night becomes appropriate. For the Zoom login instructions, you can go to www.falmouthma.gov/zba. And more on public participation in a moment. I'll introduce the board at this time. My name is TJ Hari. I'm the chair of the board. We have Ken Foreman, who is the vice chair. Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk. Ed Van Kuren, who is a full voting member. Scott Zalinski, who is a full voting member as well. Mary Berry is an associate member. James Morse is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, Ashley DeMello, who is the recording secretary. And as always, we'd like to acknowledge Justin Shanahan from the Falmouth IT department, who is helping us out with the technical aspects of tonight. And our friends at FCTV as well. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals. As provided by the bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and also from the public. And to allow a full and fair discussion of a project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file. Such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should be directed only at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor. Or an opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. And we typically limit public comment to two minutes per person, and we ask you to please identify yourself and your address for the record. And to participate in public comment, again, you can go to www.falmouthma.gov/zba. On that page, there is a link for the Zoom virtual meeting software and at the appropriate time during each hearing. I will just ask you to click the raised hand icon and we will get you elevated. And you can ask your question when the time comes. As for closing and or continuing a hearing, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony. And in the file to make a decision by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. And the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date in time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decision. The board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and we would make a motion. Or approve, and that would be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority. Is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. Okay, so turning to our agenda for the night, we do have public comment followed by three continuations. No new public hearings and we have a few items on our open meeting agenda as well. So first up is public comment. This public comment period is meant for anyone. To speak on something that is not on the agenda tonight. So if anyone out there has something to announce that is not on the agenda. Go ahead and click the raised hand icon utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software and we will get you up in a moment. All right, not seeing anyone for public comments, so we will move right ahead into our continuations. Up first, we have application 55-20 RLBE LLC Rebecca Anne Lane, Lot 2, Nice, Falmouth. It's a request for a comprehensive permit to construct five duplex buildings totaling 10 units with three units being affordable. And I believe we have a bunch of people in the attendees list. Mr. Marioni, if you're out there, just click the raised hand icon. That way Justin will be able to quickly elevate you. Thank you. All right, Justin, if we could please elevate Mr. Maroni and Mara Kamosi too, please. All right, it looks like we're still waiting for Mr. Marioni to be elevated. All right, Mr. Maroni, we have you. You just need to turn on your video and microphone.
Evening, chairman of the board.
Evening.
We also have Mike Borselli with us tonight. If you could be elevated, I appreciate it.
Sure, Mr. Borselli, if you could go ahead and just click the raised hand icon. That way it'll be easier for Justin to elevate you.
Hello, folks.
Okay, so we left off at the last meeting was we had a few miscellaneous items to clean up for here. We had waivers that had not been discussed or reported on, and we had an issue regarding the ADA. We've since the last meeting received an email from the peer reviewing saying that we've satisfied all of their comments. Relative to the engineering. And I've revised a waiver request letter. And I've sent Noreen some information that I hope satisfies the board's concerns about the access for visitors to the units. So. Feedback from the board, please.
All right, so we'll turn it to board questions are. Actually, Ms. Kamosi, would you like to present your findings to us, please?
Hello, everyone. Thank you. I sent a report out. It wasn't that. I'm not sure if Nora had a chance to get it out. I sent it around 5:30, so it was a little bit late compared to when they started the meeting. Apologies for that. I'll just read the last paragraph of the report for those of you who didn't get it. So the zoning board of appeals requested a septic system with a higher level of nitrogen removal than the application was proposing. However, as this is a local requirement, the applicant has requested a waiver as part of the comprehensive permit process. When reviewing the application for financial feasibility, the cap rate or the return on total cost was determined. The ROTC, that return on total cost, is defined in the comprehensive permit statute as projected NOI. Of a project divided by the projected total development costs, including development fees and overhead. Standard ROTC against which this project would be evaluated is 8.2% based on when the project eligibility letter was received. However, the ROTC for this project based on the actual value is 5.5%, which is lower than the standard. The developer was asked to provide information on a septic system that provide higher levels of nitrogen removal along with the cost. These costs were provided, which were all higher than the applicant had originally proposed. And selling a different septic system would lead to an increase in the total development cost of the project. As such, an increase to the cost of the project would lower the ROTC and make the project financially infeasible. Based on the statute.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kamosi. All right, so I suppose we will turn it over to board questions and the voting numbers on this project. Are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Zalinski. James, do you want to start us off?
I have no questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, James. Scott?
I don't. I don't have any.
All right. Mary, any questions?
I have no questions.
All right. Ed, anything?
There's no questions at this time.
All right, Ken?
Yes, I do have questions. And I wonder first if we could start with a review of exactly what the costs are for. The proposed septic system, which I and please confirm that that is to treat combined treatment for all 10 units. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the the proposed system is costs, what?
Forty three thousand dollars and change.
And what would adding the denitrification using the fast system, what how much additional?
I think it was another forty five or fifty thousand dollars.
I think it was forty six thousand eight hundred, according to my calculation, based on the information that. That Mara provided. In her email on June 9. If I understand that correctly. Can you can you confirm that, Mara?
I didn't provide the information, so I.
Okay.
The email was not from me.
Who is this, Noreen? Can you? I have an email I'm looking at that's from. Or Kamose, is that how you pronounce your name?
I asked a clarifying question. I didn't. I asked, what are these three numbers? The numbers that I received were from the developer.
Okay. So what I see is eighty nine thousand with the addition of denitrification and about forty. Two thousand three hundred and nine without. And based on that, I estimated it adds forty six thousand eight hundred dollars of cost to the project. So what is the total cost of the project?
Well, that's the answer right now because prices are fluctuating so much. So we'll have to figure out total costs after we go to final approval, but at this point we have no idea.
Okay.
Except everything is going up, as you know.
So is it maybe not financially feasible at all?
We don't. We don't see that as the issue yet, but we have alternatives to that in the financing. And first thing we have to do is have a project.
Well, all I had to go on was your pro forma, and I think. Based on that, I estimated that. Including the developers' fees and contractors' fees, you were at about 2.4 million.
Not to say at this point.
Well, that's what was in your pro forma.
There was a pro forma that was done a year ago.
I understand, but you're telling me the cost is only going up.
Yeah.
So this forty six thousand additional for denitrification adds about 1.9% to the total cost of the project.
You want me to agree or?
Well, I mean, based on that and maybe less if your project costs are higher. So I'm trying to understand how that makes the whole project infeasible.
But first of all, the the bylaw does not even apply to this project.
But local concerns do, and wastewater in this region is a local concern. And if you were developing 10 units in a traditional manner. It would trigger the bylaw. So that's what I'm basing my assessment on.
Well, it wouldn't trigger the bylaw. Well, we could push it in a traditional mail, do 10 units, we'd need 10 acres. So.
But the loading is equivalent. From a unit regardless of whether it's on an acre or on a tenth of an acre. Nutrient inputs to the coastal system are the same.
I disagree.
They're different? Why are they different?
Well, because we're first of all, we're in a stabilization zone, wouldn't 2,000 feet, we don't need.
That's not my question. You said the nutrient inputs would be different. And I'd like to know why a unit.
As a bedroom count, if we put if we put five houses on five acres, we could have five five bedroom homes. Which would be 25 bedrooms. Here we've got 18 bedrooms on this project. So that I mean, you're just doing the math. It could be different. And we've done. We've done a real good job of maintaining all of our nutrients from the runoff on site. And you know, what we don't need is anything to run the costs up any higher and make the project more difficult. So we've asked for a waiver from someone we don't even think applies for.
Those are my concerns and my questions.
All right, thank you, Ken. Bob, anything?
Yeah, so my my questions are gonna have a little bit more to do with the estimates that were needed for the comparison. So how many estimates? Did you receive? Was it just one estimate from it says Joya Inc.?
Yes.
So why is there? Why is somebody giving an estimate on a system making a statement that's saying? The cost of the install in maintenance each year has little to no benefit. What does that have to do with an estimate?
I don't know what it has to do with that. I wish he hadn't made the statement, but it was on the quote and I submitted the quote to the board.
So I understand you did. You wish he didn't make it and he unfortunately did make it. So in my opinion. Because he made the statement and put it on the estimate. It's a biased estimate. He has a pre conclusion that he's put on a form that had nothing to do. Does doesn't Joya Inc., aren't they the ones that? Don't they work for? Do they work for Mr. McCleone or no? Maybe they don't. Maybe I'm confusing the company.
No, they do work for Mr. McCleone. We've also done work for the developer of. Rebecca Ann, the rest of Rebecca Ann and. Primarily Born Cotway, they're doing the subdivision up the end of two born Cotway.
So so usually when an estimate comes in and we're trying to show costs on something like this comparison. We would look for something that is non biased or doesn't have the appearance of it. I would assume that an estimate would have come in from a company. It didn't have any kind of direct ongoing business. Situation with the current developer, but. Mara, is this other figures from this one estimate? This is basically what you had to deal with, correct?
The way the statute reads, any increase in the project would deem it financially infeasible. So if the septic system was cheaper, then it would be possible to put in, to possible to require, but any increase in the. Cost would make the project infeasible.
So I guess my general comment would be, I don't think this is an acceptable estimate just because of the. Unfortunate, as Mr. Maroni says, comments are made on the estimate form itself. I think you have to have one that doesn't show any form of bias and. They've he they've also written in here, which I haven't seen on these before. They're estimating causes cost for electrical. On motors. So how is a septic installation company giving estimates on electrical?
I gave that estimate on.
I'll finish to the applicant. When you do a quote like that, you go electrician's cost, you go out and get a hard cost for the components, then you put your time and labor on it. So if they're showing an electrical cost. It's on the contractor, a general contractor, the excavation contractor. He's he's in many cases, and I don't know if it's in this case. Goes out and gets his prices individually to sub the parts that he doesn't do, but has to be part of the. The the build of the septic system itself. So you know, electrician, so you need a price from him to power.
Yeah, so so in this case, Mr. Maroni, you're the one giving the electrical, correct?
I didn't make it up, though. I did place a phone call to an electrician. And asked him what he thought the cost would be. And there's a blower motor that has to be wired. There's an alarm that has to be wired, has to go back.
So. So so who? So who is the electrician?
Joe Pinolet. The Falmouth guy, the guy who's doing brick kiln for us.
So the same person that that's. Okay, I I guess my only comment was I I just think unfortunately the way this estimate is given. It's a it's just a biased estimate. I don't know how anybody could use this figures because of the comments that he's written on the form. And I'm not saying that his figures may not be correct. But the moment he made that statement that he doesn't feel these systems have any benefit. I think it it puts it in question.
May I respond to that? We used, we got the quote from Arthur Joya because he's done a lot of work in the area, very familiar with the soils. He knew what the additional cost would be. He's done them before. His opinion notwithstanding, the number is the number. We don't care what he thinks, whether it's valuable or it isn't, it's.
Unless unless somebody unless somebody has made an opinion in advance of giving an estimate. And they're adjusting the estimate based on their opinion. And you know, when you get estimates in general, no matter what the business is. Well, first of all, I've never seen someone just turn in one. They usually at least take two because it gives you a better idea of the readings, but. I just I just don't think it's proper. I think it shows. I just think it shows bias and I understand you didn't wish he didn't put it on there. But the problem is he did put it on there and it was submitted. And you know, as far as Ms. Kamosi is is involved, she can only give go with any figures that are presented. My my comment would be, I I just don't feel that. An estimate with these kind of comments on it is something that should have even been reviewed. I think they should have got somebody outside or. I just I think it puts it in question because there's there's current business on other projects with the same developer, I think. You know, there's an issue. I understand, you know, what Scott said about you need the electrical. That's fine. So get the electric, get the the info from the electrical. You know, electrician, have him put it in there, but for you to say, well, I just called someone, got a number on a phone and I've noted it on the plan. I just don't think that's proper for us to take to when we're reviewing the estimates.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Mr. Borselli, go ahead.
I just I haven't seen the cost estimates, but I so forgive me for asking a question if it's obvious. There's also ongoing testing, ongoing operation and maintenance, and I don't know if those lie down in the estimate, not just the installation costs. Those are real.
They were. They were, Mike, and I think they were estimated at seventeen hundred dollars a unit. Which, you know, over 10 units is not gonna break the bank.
Yep, I just didn't say it enough. It was mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Borselli.
I I just would point out that we did get a letter in the file. From George Heifelder, who acknowledged this is an important issue and. You know. Also indicated that there are other systems as well that might be considered. The question I have is if if a 1% increase or 1, 2% increase here. Due to the, you know, in the in the overall cost of the project. Due to the installation of the system makes it uneconomic, and we have testimony that. The, you know, cost of materials and so forth is going up, making the overall cost even higher. Which would frankly make this a smaller percentage increase, but also of course, challenge the economic feasibility of the project. Maybe the whole project is not economically feasible. I just wonder if. Does Mara have any comment on that?
I don't. I'm sorry. I can't guess about costs and various other things. I I could only look at the data that I was given and the statute.
So you 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 estimated 5.5% is their net operating income?
No, that's not.
Where did that number come from?
As the ROTC, the return on total cost.
Because I noticed in the in the in the submitted pro forma, there was no information on what they estimated the profit to be. So I just was wondering. Where that 5.5% came from.
Um, it's. I got it from the ROTC is the. Just looking back. It's the NOI of the project divided by the projected total development cost.
Right, so that's right. So the NOI, what what was the NOI?
I got the NOI by putting their numbers into the one stop format.
This a rental?
Yes.
Yeah. So how much would that increase reduce that 5.5%?
How much would what increase?
With the with the with the addition of a forty five thousand dollar. Denitrification system.
Well, it doesn't. It almost doesn't matter because it increases it. It decreases it, you know, so according to the statute. Any decrease is economically infeasible.
How are they gonna deal with the cost of materials going on?
That's not. The statute does not contemplate that. And I, you know, I'm sorry if I'm seeming to, so I'm just doing the thing that I was asked.
Well, it seems to make sense that what they might do is increase the rent.
Sure, I mean, that's that's not up for me to decide. It's just I was asked to to look at. This very detailed thing in the comprehensive permit, and I looked at the statute, and this is the answer. So that's.
So how are the, you know, what assumptions are in the? In the. Made to calculate the NOI, I guess, is, you know.
It's whatever they put in their financial feasibility, their financial information, I utilized that.
Couldn't we, I mean, you know, what are prevailing rents these days?
They're in there. I mean, I don't think that that it's within my purview to to look at the rents and to change their pro forma. It's just.
No, I know, but you know, what bothers me always in these situations is that. There's a the developers cry economic. there's a, the developers cry economic infeasibility. And yet, when you probe into the economics, you, you hit a roadblock. So, you know, in my view, then they need to go up to the hack and justify why it makes it uneconomic. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Ken. And I, I tend to agree with Bob, and I don't have a specific question at this moment, but, um, Bob asked a few very valid questions and raised some good issues about, um, the, the estimates that the applicant provided. Uh, so we'll turn it to public comment at the moment. If anyone out there has a question, comment or a concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon in the Zoom app and we will elevate you in a moment. On Justin, if you could elevate Ashley D'Amello, please. Thank you, Justin. And if anyone out there has public comment, just go ahead and click the raised hand icon. All right. Not seeing anyone for public comment. So back to the board. Uh, any final questions for Ms. Kamosi? If we could, if we could cut her loose, I'm sure she'll appreciate it. Anything from the board at all for Ms. Kamosi? All right. Ms. Kamosi, I think, I think we can let you go tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, does the board have any sort of follow-up questions regarding this application? Bob, if, Bob, if you're talking, you're muted.
Sorry. Do, uh, want to go with the information regarding the handicap access ramps? I know that we were submitted information and a, uh, maybe Mr. Maroni could, uh, discuss what their proposal is. These are for, they sent pictures of some portable temporary, uh, looks like handicap accessible ramps. And I think what they were proposing was that if somebody needed one, they could contact them and they would be supplied. I just wanted to get a little more information on that.
Yeah, I talked with, I talked with Dan McCrone about this and he's willing to, uh, they're not expensive. I think that collapsible foldable ramp was $200 and the, the threshold ramp was even less. So he's willing to, uh, purchase them, keep them in the garage at his house. And if we know someone's coming to the site, because he lives right around the corner, someone's coming to the site, he'll bring them over to the site and provide access to anyone who needs to get into the unit. Whether it's a tenant or, you know, just a inspector or whatever that needs to get into the unit that is having difficulty with access.
So, so, you know, and I know he lives, uh, I guess next door, butting the site. So let's say, um, somebody shows up to visit the unit. What would the process be? They have to first be supplied with a number for Mr. McCrone. They would then have to reach him and then they would have to schedule him wherever he is to, uh, pick it up, drop it off. And then I guess it must be a quick install, but install it.
It just takes seconds to install it, but they shouldn't be on the site without somebody there anyway, especially if they're, uh, not a worker. You know, that some tenant shouldn't just roam on the site and go in a building.
No, my question is if somebody shows up to visit somebody in the building and now needs one of these ramps, what's the process they go to at that point to get one?
Oh, so assuming I understand your question correctly, someone's living in the unit and they have a visitor coming to see them and needs access. Yeah, just let us know. We'll provide it, bring it over for the weekend if they're there or whatever.
So, so somebody, so somebody would always be available 24/7 to get the call, get the item and drop it off?
Well, I'm not saying they're available 24/7, but give them proper notice. Uh, and we can certainly tell our tenants that, give them proper notice. We can have this there for you. I'm sure Dan could have some backup, but if he's away for the weekend, uh, somebody else can bring it over.
So, so what, what, um, just so I understand what that is. So what, what are they considering proper notice?
I don't know. Certainly not the same day, you know, let them know the day before.
Have you ever, have you ever seen, are there any examples of any of these other kind of temporary ramps that are used on projects that are new construction?
Uh, yeah, I use them, I've used them on several different projects. Mostly it's for people who've had, recently had surgery, need temporary access into their unit till they, till they don't, you know, a month, three weeks.
But, but have you seen them on new construction projects or projects that, that weren't built yet or in a net, in a, you know, were constructed?
No, I haven't. Um, and I probably haven't because they're absolutely not required on single and duplex projects. I think this was a nice gesture from Mr. McCrone's party to try and satisfy this valid concern.
Uh, I guess my only comment on that would be that, you know, I, I understand that it's a nice gesture that he would have these things available, but then it takes that somebody has to pre-schedule in advance, make sure they can reach somebody, make sure that person is available to go over. I could see that if this was something that was a, you know, a, a current building, you know, it just wasn't able to be constructed for any kind of a, a handicap access. But it just seems unusual where you're building a brand new building. And then you're, you know, proposing this system for, uh, you know, temporary ramps where someone has to schedule one. You know, I know that the, the town's needs assessment, and you were mentioning that, you know, we didn't have to do this. It was, you know, the goodness of your heart. But, you know, the town's housing needs assessment did, did state in there that they felt that, you know, handicap accessible units, um, the town felt were in high demand. So at some point the town did look at that. As far as I know, they have improvised, um, their current statement. So I just don't understand why you can't put a ramp on one of these buildings, install something that actually is there with the new construction that, that already exists.
We'll put a ramp on any building that somebody needs it on. It does not make sense, Mr. Dubin, to put ramp on a building that no one's going to use.
Does it make, does it, does it make sense to have a handicap parking space?
I'll take it out if you don't want it. That's, that's easy. We'll take it out.
Are you, are you allowed to take out a handicap parking space?
I don't know.
You don't, you don't know that you are required for a handicap parking space?
You're supposed to have a handicap space. You're not supposed to have ramps on buildings in a single and double, uh, family unit. I, I, I don't understand the line of questioning. McCrone made a, a, a gesture to satisfy this and I, I don't know.
So you can't, can't modify any of these entrances for an ADA compliant constructed ramp as part of the construction?
We could. It does not make sense to do it. And, and we will if we rent to somebody who's handicapped. We'll do it gladly.
And are all these year-round rentals?
Yes. Three of them are affordable.
All right. That's my only question.
And we intend to market to, uh, through the Affordable Housing Marketing Plan to handicap people.
Oh, I, I did have one more question. It's on your waivers list. It's on item number three, which where the town requires in the Board of Health, you register the Board of Health on occupancy and you mentioned that Mass Housing will be monitoring agent on the project. So, um, they monitor occupancy levels and that's not needed. Does Mass Housing Finance Agency supply that information to the town?
Yes, they do. And this is relatively new. They, they, because it's so difficult to get people to do the monitoring, Mass Housing has decided that they're going to do all the monitoring, uh, on rental project. Now, you, you may notice that Brook Kiln's done a little separately. That's because when Falmouth put some of their CPA funds into that, they demanded that it be monitored locally as well. Mass Housing, uh, subordinated to Falmouth Housing Authority to be the monitoring agent who reports to Mass Housing, who reports to the town. So that's why that one's a little different.
Uh, and I guess my only other comment on the waiver request and item number two is I know that you suggested, uh, statements that the board make um, regarding that septic system, and I just think it would be, um, uncomfortable for the board to make that kind of a statement that's suggested.
Uh, Mr. Maroni, would, would you agree with me that nitrogen loading is a local concern? You could even make the argument that it might be a regional concern on Cape Cod?
I'd rather defer that question to Mike Borselli. Mike, can you, can you help me out on that one?
Thank you. Thank you very much for that.
No, well, you, you were talking about Herman and all about how we retained all the nitrogen, uh, all the runoff on site and how, you know, there was no net runoff or anything on that. And you understand that better than I.
Yeah, I, I, well, I'll make, I'll make a statement as best I can. I mean, we're also sacrificial for nitrogen as an issue. That being said, and this is an opinion, harnessing this project with denitrification, when there's so many non-conforming septic systems in Falmouth is just not equitable. And even retrofitting this septic system with a denitrifying septic system, it's going to have no measurable impact on nitrogen loading whatsoever. You can't argue against nitrogen loading being, being a concern. I mean, you just can't. But there's a lot better ways to solve the problem, like searing, updating cesspool systems on individual lots to just put the burden on individual projects moving forward is not the way to handle it, in my opinion.
And may I ask one other question, Mike? If we, if we had to add the denitrification system, which requires, I think, a two-chamber tank, uh, the blower, the alarm, do we even have room to fit it on the site after all the other things that we have underground? We have room to add another?
It would be, it would be, uh, complicated and challenging, depending on the type of technology used. We'd have to really look into it and study it and do a design.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
I do.
Go ahead, Scott.
I remain pretty quiet on this and, um, I told myself I wasn't going to jump into this, but the, the argument that not doing anything on a project, and I've always been against putting denitrifying systems in for the, for the, for the, um, just, just to do it or, or, but I, you just made the statement, Mike, that it is a problem. So if it is a problem and you have an opportunity to help that problem with, with the, with the minor percentage of the overall cost of this, why, why would, why would the applicant, and I'll ask this to Mr. Maroni too, fight this minor issue if, 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 if the rest of the project is, is, is doable?
Well, I'll, I'll just say this, I'll, I'll add, I'll, I'll add this comment. It's a societal issue. It's an issue for all of us, but we also have an affordable housing issue. Young people don't have a place to live on the Cape. I know firsthand, I've had people leave my office, young junior engineers that can no longer afford to live here. So I stand by my opinion. To put the burden on one project is not the way to go. Yes, it would be a drop in the bucket though. It would reduce nitrogen, but it would not be, I'm not qualified to have an opinion on how much, but.
I understand, I, I understand. And I understand everybody has their own, their own views on this, and I do. And I, and I like this project. But I can't see, and, and I think that it's, it's exactly what we need for that area. It, it, it checks a lot of the boxes. It really does. But I can't imagine with one statement saying, I really don't even know how much this is going to cost. And then to quantify one and a half percent of whatever, uh, Mr. Foreman quoted and be that specific. How can you not know one number, but know one number? As an argument for this? That's, that's just my question. I know people vote on this anyway, but I, I, I just felt like that had to be said. You, you can't have it both ways. You can't know what the number is here and it's uneconomical, but know exactly that it will be uneconomical. You follow me?
I, I follow you, but we were asked to get a number on the septic system. We weren't asked to get a number on.
And, and you got an arbitrary number from a contractor that does business with you every day. When I do bids or whenever we look at bids, we want to see hard costs, especially, especially in a situation like this where you know you're going to get pushback from the board. Why would you come in with such an ambiguous, uh, uh, quote from your guy? When you knew that was going to be pushed back from the board? I can't understand why you don't, you don't see that.
I, you know, I don't see it. The guy knows what he's doing. He's done many systems in the area. He knows what they cost. That to me sounds like the most logical guy to get to give you the price. And, and we didn't make up numbers on the, on the structures. We went on and got a quote from, uh, Acme Shori on the, on the structures and then we put his labor on it. And you know what? When we compared it to what we pay for, say, a three-bedroom house at about $7,000 a house, and then took these buildings and added it up, it came out to about the same thing. Five buildings, $35,000, $7,000 for the house, $43,000. So it came out to a little bit more. That's where this number actually come out more than we thought it was going to come out. Very, very similar. He knows the area, he knows the soils, he knows what the digging is, and he got a quote on the, uh, material. Made a lot of sense to me.
But you can't get a, a number on the building cost with an.
But I wasn't asked to get a number on the building.
But you were comparing the, the, the two, Nick.
No, I'm not comparing it. Ken's comparing it.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Thank you, Nick. Sorry.
I can just say I'm, I compared it based on the information submitted in the application. I didn't make it up. Uh, they said that, uh, the total, you know, and, and I believe these numbers are probably going up, but they, they, they said their, uh, total development cost for $1,847,500 and their development and contractors fees were $550,000, which by the way, works out to something like 30% of the total project cost. I mean, maybe the fees could be reduced to cover the cost of the septic system upgrade. So that, I mean, I agree, affordable housing is a crisis. I completely agree. But that doesn't mean that in the name of affordable housing, we should trash the environment. Uh, those people have to live here. They have to use those water resources. And we need to maintain them and greater density makes the problem even more severe. Uh, it's only going to be solved one house at a time, whether that, those houses are hooked up to sewers or have alternative onsite systems.
Well said, Ken. Uh, and we do have a late submittal for public comment. It's through the chat. I know that we're outside of the normal public comment period, but, uh, especially since this is our last time on Zoom. I just want to make sure that we get this on the record. Uh, it says, thank you, Mike Borselli. This is how we do not get to our goals for affordable housing by putting in requirements which will not affect the denitrification management that much. Affordable housing is critical to our infrastructure now more than ever. And that is from Joan Bates, 29 Redlands Road. All right. Uh, any, any last follow-up questions from the board?
Yeah, just one question regarding those, um, the temporary ramps that, that Mr. Maroni sent over. Are those ramps ADA compliant?
They are. They are. They're from a, I can give you the website of the company that, uh, we got them from. But yes, they are.
You have one question?
You have one question.
Go ahead, Ed.
Do those ramps have railings on them?
They, no, they don't. They can be put on. I'm sorry.
It's going to be a safety.
I'm, I'm missing the question. I'm sorry.
I think you said it might be a safety hazard, Mr. Marioni.
It, it might be if we were higher. You can, you can get, you can get them with, you can bolt on hand, handrails for people that need, you can buy narrow ones for people that need to hold both sides. Those are big enough for a wheelchair.
But could you just forward over, like you said, from the company, just showing that they're ADA compliant, they meet the mass
Sure.
building requires ADA, so that if we know if they do require rail or not? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed. All right. So we are looking at a continuance here. Do we want?
Can I ask, why, why are we continuing? Why, what else do we need to know? Why, why not?
I, I heard certain requests for certain items throughout the, throughout the hearing. So I was just assuming that we were going to continue it.
In, in my view, we've, we, we've heard enough. I don't think that much is going to change.
All right.
Up to the board, obviously.
Yeah, so.
I mean, the other, the other. Of course, you guys will be making this decision most likely without my input, but.
Unfortunately.
So we received today the, the letter from George Hufeltar, which went out to the board members. And he had a lot of comments in there about, you know, groups and things that we should be looking into, or that if he could, if he had the chance to review the plans, he may have more input. He kind of was able to be reached last minute. And it seemed like some of the suggestions that he had in there might be something that the board may want to look into or just get some information from.
Well, he, he suggested referring this to the Water Quality Management, which meets like once a month. I mean, he says, "With more comprehensive review of the project, without more comprehensive review, I cannot make further comments. I might suggest referral to the Water Quality Management Committee. With all that is happening, with lawsuits from Conservation Law Foundation and Mashpee and Barnstable, I strongly suspect a review of the project in the context of the comprehensive wastewater management plans and findings that are driving outcomes." "Dense development without consideration of nutrient implications of wastewater and land use is exactly how we landed where we are today in regard to degraded estuaries." And then he suggests that he could point us to, to other available technologies. There certainly are some out there that function better than fast. They may cost the same, they may cost less, they may cost slightly more. But if the criteria is that any increase in cost makes the project unaffordable, well, you know, it's going to cause an increase in cost. Unless they find other ways to reduce costs.
All right. So I suppose the question is, do we have enough information to close the hearing tonight? Or is there anything that the board needs to request in order to come to a conclusion? So the board, the board members who are voting on this project are myself, Ken, Bob, Ed, and Scott. So I guess I'll just ask one by one. Ken, what do you think? Yeah, have enough to close tonight?
I, I think we do. I mean, I think we have their, I don't, I think that the, the number they came up with, the 46,000, is probably in the ballpark. You know, it could be 60, it might be 30, but it's not going to change all that much.
All right. Bob, you think we got enough to close?
Yeah, I mean, Ken has more expertise on the, you know, nitrogen and septic. So if he thinks that we have enough information on that, as far as the, you know, handicap ramps, I don't need the additional information. I'm going to make my own, you know, comments of that, no matter what that is anyways, so.
All right. Ed, what do you think? Do we have enough information to close the hearing?
I, I think there's more information out there. That could go on for the next six months. I don't know what you call a stopping point, but George has some good points on the water quality management people. They only meet once a month. That could drag out for six months and nobody wants that.
Right. Maybe not on this project, but maybe in the future, we can take his recommendations under consideration for sure.
Right.
All right. And Chris, Scott, there you are.
Yeah, I got enough.
Got enough to close? All right.
I'll even make the most.
No, I just have a question, just a quick question to the administrator. So if we close this this evening, do we still need a extension sign?
So that would make sense because what you would do is if you closed the hearing, you would be reviewing a draft at the next meeting. So it would, it's still probably appropriate to get a continuance sign.
Let's operate under an abundance of caution, shall we?
I mean, so you are allowed, I believe it's 40 days from the close to vote and file the final decision, but it's still best practice to get a continuance.
All right. So, Mr. Marioni, it looks like we will be closing the hearing tonight, but in order to do so, will you be able to sign an, an extension agreement?
Why would we need an extension? I'm not, unclear on that. Who's explaining that? We closed the public hearing tonight. You have 40 days to, to render a decision and recur at the clerk's office. That's not enough time? Is that what you're asking?
So, so that, that's not the case. It's just to ensure that we are maintaining the board's activities within the appropriate timeframe. So typically, it's appropriate to have all parties consent to continuing to the next date.
Which, the next date?
And just to further elaborate on Noreen's comments, Mr. Marioni, as you know, the governor's order suspending the provisions of the open meeting law that, that is expiring, is it next Tuesday? So any protection that the board has in terms of rendering a decision, that goes away pretty quickly.
I thought that went away last December.
No, it's, it's continued. And I know just while Noreen's looking at available dates, we are very busy with dates in the near future.
Yeah. So the date for the review of a draft would probably have to be July 29th due to the board's current scheduling, because I think, you know, where you go through all the findings and conditions, you do need a period of time to look at that.
All right. So I, sorry, go, go ahead, Mr. Marioni.
I'm not even sure what my comment is on that. July 29th. Yeah. What, again, why do you need an extension? We're outside your statute.
I mean, either, either he consents to it or he doesn't. I mean, banter back and forth.
Well, I'd like to understand it, if you don't mind. I'd like to understand why we need an extension. Are we outside the statutory timeframe? Is that what you're saying? We're going to be outside?
Well, so we, we currently have a, I think we have an extension currently in place that goes to the top of July.
July 6th, I thought.
Yeah. So it may not be required. I would just recommend that it's consistent with gaining consent from both parties. And it is certainly best to be on the safe side as make, as far as having documentation and consent.
And, and I know the board's schedule for the next couple of weeks is jam-packed. We couldn't even get you into the schedule if we tried, Mr. Marioni.
No, I, I understand. I, I, I'll have to talk to Dan, but I, I'm sure if, if there's no other alternative, we'll consent, yeah.
In June 29th, there's 50 days from that.
July, July 29th.
July, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That's what I meant.
All right. So let's go ahead and have a motion to close the hearing, and then we will proceed from there.
Don't move, Ms. Chairman.
Second.
Motion was made by Scott to close the hearing. Thank you, Scott. Second by Ken. Roll call, vote. Scott?
Scott Zelensky, aye.
Thank you, Scott. Ed?
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Thank you, Ken. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Thank you, Bob. And TJ Hurry, aye. So it passes unanimously. The hearing is closed. And how would the board like to proceed?
I'd move that way. Ask Noreen to draft a motion approving the project with appropriate condition.
I'll second Mr. Foreman's motion.
All right. Motion directing Noreen to draft a positive decision with conditions made by Ken, seconded by Scott. Another roll call vote. Scott?
Scott Zelensky, aye.
Thank you, Scott. Ed?
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Thank you, Ken. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Thank you, Bob. And TJ Hurry, aye. So that motion passes unanimously, directing Noreen to draft a positive decision with conditions on the project.
Thank you.
And did we, oh, wait, did we include the date? Don't tell me we need to do another roll call vote for the date. Can?
On June 20, on July 29th.
All right.
To be presented and voted on July 29th. How about that? Add that to my motion.
Sounds good.
Actually, whose motion was it? Scott?
Yours.
That was yours, Ken. That was yours. All right. July 29th it is. All right, Mr. Marioni, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Borselli. Sorry to forget you for a second.
Yes.
Good night. All right. Moving on, we have continuation of application 33-21 Falmouth Housing Trust Incorporated, 55 Lewis Neck Road in East Falmouth, requesting a comprehensive permit to construct three affordable, single-family dwellings. And for the applicant, I believe we have Attorney Moynihan, Attorney Moynihan. If you could go ahead and click the raised hand icon, that way Justin can elevate you quickly. All right. Looks like you've been elevated, Attorney Moynihan. So you'll have to turn on your video and your microphone.
So, Mr. Chairman, so just so everybody knows, and I think everybody got it, but everybody received the revised referral from Mr. Bott?
Yes. And a lot of other correspondences as well.
And there was correspondence that did just come in today. So I know it's, it's too late, but it's from, it's from Marcus Rico Emmer in Brooks, PC. Attorney of law. This was received on June 10th. Let me just read this in quickly. It's regarding the application of the Falmouth Housing Trust, 55 Lewis Neck Road. Dear Mr. Hurry and members of the zoning board of appeals, please be advised that this firm represents Kathleen Maher and Bernard McDade Butters, owners of 51 Lewis Neck Road, which directly abuts the above referenced and proposed construction of three affordable units. On parcel C2, 55 Lewis Neck Road, East Falmouth, the Butters oppose the project at 55 Lewis Neck and respectfully request that the zoning board of appeals deny the applica, the applicant, Falmouth Housing Trust, comprehensive permit application pursuant to master and laws 40B for the following reasons. Number one, FHT's project is barred by a private covenant signed by FHT in the town of Falmouth. Per covenant signed by the FHT in the town of Falmouth Planning Board on December 6, 2019, FHT is barred from building anything other than one single-family residential structure on parcel C2. See a copy of covenant attached. The ZBA's approval of FHT's comprehensive permit application would violate a covenant signed by the town of Falmouth and place the town in breach of a private agreement. This covenant is not zoning and cannot be overwritten by a 40B comprehensive permit. And then they gave a KC 135 Wells Avenue LLC versus Housing Appeals Committee regarding property restriction held by municipality cannot be overwritten by a municipality zoning board of appeals when acting on a comprehensive permit under chapter 40B. The proposed project is located at 55 Lewis Neck Road, East Falmouth, Massachusetts, formerly known as parcel C2, which directly abuts the Butters property located at 51 Lewis Neck Road, formerly as lot C1. The two parcels are shown in the plan entitled Plan of Land in Falmouth, Massachusetts, prepared by Martin Pildis, dated August 7, 2011, recorded with Barnstable County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 641, page 33, which is his exhibit B. As shown in the plan, parcel number C2 is not a building lot and not intended by endorsement of this plan to be shown as a building lot. Parcel C2 will be deemed a potential building lot only upon a determination by the planning board that there is inadequate access to the parcel C2 in accordance with Mass General Laws 41, section 81L, and the Falmouth zoning bylaw, section 241791C. On November 5, 2019, FHT appeared before the Town of Falmouth Planning Board, requesting a determination of access for parcel C2. An attorney for FHT, Laura Moynihan, told the planning board in the context of widening Lewis Neck Road, we're asking to add one more house lot. Again, Attorney Moynihan stated regarding the road, it's serving a few houses, and we are asking to have it serve one more house. Planning Board member Robert Leary stated, when you allow six other people to use this access and not the seventh, I don't agree with that, indicating that he believed FHT was building one home on the lot, the seventh. Thereafter, on November 21st, 2019, the Town of Falmouth Planning Board granted a determination of access for one dwelling, parcel C2. It lists the booking page of the registry. This covenant sends forth the agreement binding between FHT and the Town of Falmouth and the Falmouth Planning Board with respect to Falmouth Planning Board's endorsement of the A&R Plan and the issuance of a building permit for one single-family residential structure on parcel C2. This covenant shall be recorded with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds simultaneously with the A&R Plan, the recording of the deed conveying parcel C2 to the FHT, and it shall be effective as the date of such recording, and shall be binding to the party's successors and assigns. It said a building permit shall not be issued for a single-family residential structure on parcel C2 by the Falmouth Building Commissioner until the terms and conditions of determination of access have been met and set forth in section 2401791C permits of the zoning bylaw. FHT and members of the Falmouth Planning Board executed the instrument on December 6, 2019, before noted republic. Covenant is a binding restriction on the two parties as signatories of the agreement. FHT in the town of Falmouth stipulated FHT can only build one single-family residence on parcel C2. As such, the proposed project involving three units of affordable housing violates this covenant, and the ZBA does not have the authority to override a private property restriction. Two, the Falmouth Planning Board was misled into removing the unbuildable restriction from parcel C2. The planning board was deceived into approving a determination of access, and in approval not required, remove the unbuildable restriction. Members of the planning board believed FHT intended to build only one house and indicated would not have removed the unbuildable restriction had they known FHT planned multiple houses. Further, the planning board voted not to endorse the project in a referral letter to the Board of Selectmen. The ZBA should not approve a comprehensive permit application that the planning board does not support and was deceived into approving. At a planning board meeting of June 2, 2020, several members expressed confusion and disapproval of SFT's request for a referral to the Board of Selectmen for the 40B site approval letter. See attached exhibit D. On the following are excerpts from the planning board members at the meeting. Tom Bott commented, "Town council is of the opinion that covenant on the property is an agreement between the two parties. It's not zoning and cannot be overwritten." Paul Dryer commented, "We have a covenant that says one house. We have a letter from the chairman of the Falmouth Housing Trust, where four times she mentions one lot, get the application to mass housing." where four times she mentions one lot. Yet the application to Mass Housing shows four houses. Today at the site visit, they talked about four houses as well. I'm curious how one went to four. From Jim Fox, we generally don't allow a dead end longer than 500 feet, but we were told it was only one house. Patricia Kerfoot, it was adamantly stated that it was for one house and that's why a covenant was put in place. Charlotte Harris, we made an exception because it was only going to be one house. The reason for the covenant was to be sure remained one house. Robert Leary, I voted for the determination of access based on one unit. Had they come before us with four units, I would have never voted for that. I felt I was misled. Again, from Town Planner Tom Bott, I think it is appropriate to say that the planning board voted to endorse an A&R based on one unit and would not have voted for it with multiple units. Charlotte Harris commented, there is a bait and switch feeling here. I don't feel there should be four houses. Planning Board then subsequently voted not to endorse the project to the Board of Selectmen. The ZBA should not approve zoning relief for an entity that deceived and misled the planning board into removing the unbuildable restriction from the lot. The planning board does not approve multiple units on parcel C2 in specifically included language allowing one single-family home and signing a covenant with FHT. To come before the ZBA now and ask for approval of three houses is nothing short of a bait and switch as articulated by the planning board members, Charlotte Harris. Number three, the project is not in appropriate site for additional housing. The project is located in a residential seed district pursuant to the Falmouth zoning bylaw below as a comparison of the required and proposed zoning for the project is a breakdown of the frontage minimum width in lot area with what's required, proposed for lot one, proposed for lot two, and proposed for lot three. Essentially, the project seeks to subdivide a 40,000 square foot lot meant for one single-family home into three lots for three homes. Approving the project will cause numerous problems, including one neighborhood character, two, overburdening of the electrical system. It says the project's application does not adequately address how the current privately maintained electrical systems will be able to handle the construction of three additional homes. These electrical systems were constructed decades ago and cannot handle such a drastic influx of new electricity demand. Approving the project will impose significant costs on the butters upgrading the system. It would be extremely unfair given the lot was originally zoned as unbuildable. Safety hazards for children. To access the school bus, any children living in the proposed project must walk to Acapescada Road, no sidewalks and no street lighting on Lewis Neck. This is a year-round safety hazard, but especially in winter months with increased darkness during school years. And finally, no access to transportation. One of the many laudable goals of chapter 40B in the housing choice legislation referenced in the project application is to locate affordable housing near public transportation. Doing so allows a developer to build less parking, decreasing the unit costs and lessens the need for potential residents to own cars. Project, however, is nowhere near public transportation. The project proposes shortening a shoehorning three units in a once unbuildable lot thereafter approving for one single-family unit. The residents of these units will be forced to own cars and as planning board member Pat Kerfoot articulated in June 2, 2020 meeting, quote, "Anything like this should be on public transportation. This is a mile walk from public transportation and there's no shopping or schools there." It says, see exhibit D. Therefore, the butters opposed the proposed construction of three affordable housing units and respectfully request that the ZBA deny FHT's comprehensive permit application. The butters hope that after you review the letter, you'll realize the severity of this matter and will take the affirmative steps to immediately address its concerns. Thank you for your time and consideration. Please contact me if any questions. That's signed. Ryan Z. Forzioni from Marcus Enrico Emmer in Brooks, PC. And it's CC to Kathleen Maher and Bernard McDade. And again, this came in on June 10th. And then from Lauren Moynihan. And this is June 10th regarding the Falmouth Housing Trust, 55 Lewis Neck Road application. Dear zoning board members on behalf of the applicant Falmouth Housing Trust, this letter is written in response to the letter submitted to the board dated June 9 from Attorney Ryan O. Forzioni on behalf of Kathleen Maher and Bernard McDade. One, the, uh, these are the points in response. So number one, I have explained orally and in writing that FHT could only ask for one house as part of the zoning bylaw process. There was no deception involved. We have provided the board with the Town Planner's memorandum to the Puck Planning Board issued prior to the process that confirms the Town Planner and Planning Board were advised in advance of this process that the applicant intended to build multiple houses. The planning board and the Town Planner were well aware of the access of determination. Proceeding could only be pursuant to the zoning bylaw for one house and it was not an application process for multiple houses. Two, Attorney Forzioni's letter misstates the language of the covenant. The covenant does not stipulate that FHT can only build one single-family residence. As stated at the bottom of page two of this letter, the covenant merely provides that FHT must meet the conditions of the access determination. For example, brush clearing and filling of potholes before it will receive a building permit. Attorney Peter Freeman's legal opinion filed on behalf of the applicant explains in detail why this covenant is not the type referenced in the Wells case. The board does have the authority to approve the project regardless of the covenant and this is also set forth in detail in Attorney Freeman's correspondence on file with the board. Three, the evidence provided by the applicant from the hearing process of November 26, 2019 as to why the covenant was put in place confirms that the planning board intended it at that time to act only as a vehicle to allow for conditions as to the work to be done to the road to be imposed on an A&R plan approval. It was not for the purpose of restricting the use of the land to one house or to ensure that it remained only one house. There was no such suggestion or discussion by the planning board, Town Council, Town Planner, Town Manager, Assistant Manager, and anyone else at that time that the covenant was to serve such a purpose. As noted previously, the applicant would not have agreed to such restrictions as it is clearly intended to construct multiple houses. The applicant was entering into a simple agreement to fill potholes and clear brush. Four, the reference to the June 2, 2020 discussion of the planning board voicing objection to the project must be considered in the context that this was before the road was paved and widened and drainage improvements installed. At that point, the road was a gravel road without drainage facilities and lesser in width. This is not pointed out in Attorney Forzioni's letter. The planning board has not provided any referral to the zoning board on the application for the comprehensive permit. It specifically declined to do so in its April 27, 2021 meeting when it was on the agenda for referral discussion. The planning board in such a context is to act as a board by vote of referral to the zoning board. Five, an owner that requires an access determination from the planning board under the zoning bylaw to build one single-family dwelling is only permitted to apply for one single-family dwelling. There is no action of misleading the planning board in doing so. This is all the applicant can apply for. An applicant has no right to apply to the planning board for multiple houses on a parcel when the parcel requires an access determination under the zoning bylaw unless perhaps applying for an accessory apartment as well as a dwelling. This makes no sense whatsoever that an applicant would be accused of misleading a board for following proper procedure. Once the access determination is granted under the zoning bylaw, the status of the lot is that of any other lot eligible for building permit. Any lot in the town that is eligible for one building permit may apply to the zoning board for a comprehensive permit for multiple houses. The Falmouth Housing Trust had made, had many meetings and correspondence with the Town Planner, Assistant Town Planner, Town Manager, and Affordable Housing Committee prior to this planning board process. This information is included in the application to the Massachusetts Housing and I enclose an additional copy here. The outreach efforts are reviewed by Massachusetts Housing. The applicant did not mislead anyone as to the intention of the applicant to build multiple houses on the parcel. Six, the butters' electrical lines are separate from the project. The applicant's electrical service will be through a new transformer that will be installed at the pole at the west of the subject property. The butters' pole is at the east of the subject property. There are no issues with respect to the butters' electricity. And seven, the project does not shoehorn three lots into one lot. The density for this project is 2.65 units per acre, which is relatively low for affordable housing. The project meets many of the standards of affordable housing as discussed in the application. For the town to meet its affordable housing goals, citing affordable housing in downtown locations immediately adjacent to public transportation is not always possible. These may be preferred location, but are not required locations. And that's sincerely Laura M. Moynihan.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And the voting numbers on this project are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Huron, and Scott Solinsky. Attorney Moynihan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karen Bissonette is here for the Housing Trust as well as David Martin. If you feel you would like to elevate them. I don't really have any additional comments. I think we've responded to all the issues that came up at the last hearing in my letter of June 2. I would just like to add from Mr. Dugan's lengthy read. Thank you, Mr. Dugan for that. That the attachment to my letter of today outlines all the meetings and communications that the Housing Trust had with respect to, at that time, the four-unit project. The first one dated May 22, 2018, when the representatives met with the planning board itself. And then it goes on to discuss Community Preservation Committee, Assistant Town Manager, Zoning Administrator, Town Planner, Affordable Housing Meetings, et cetera. So it was no secret that there were going to be multiple houses on the parcel. The only last comment I have, which I did not include in writing, was the question about visitability. The Housing Trust had, we had talked about visitability for lot three, which was the hundred, is the 100% affordable proposed unit. I looked into visitability standards or requirements. I was not able to find any state or federal requirements. I did find on the CHAPA website recommended standards, which is one grade level entrance, all main floor interior doors having a clear width of 32 inches and one full or half bath on the main housing level being accessible. So those were the three visitability standards recommended on the CHAPA chart. So, or I shouldn't say recommended, they're on the chart as standards. I'm assuming that that's what CHAPA is saying. But in any event, the Housing Trust could meet those three requirements with the exception of perhaps changing the one grade level entrance to one grade level entrance or ramp so that there's some flexibility there depending on the owner. So I offer that. Other than that, you know, I think I've, I don't have any additional comments and we'd be happy to answer questions or respond further if there's any public comment.
All right, great. Thank you, Attorney Moynihan. We will turn it to board questions then. James, anything?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Mary?
No questions.
Thank you, Mary. Ed?
None at this time.
Thank you, Ed. Ken?
Oh, the materials provided lay everything out, I think.
Looks like I froze for a second there. Anything else, Ken? Sorry.
No. I said, I thought the, you know, all the materials which Robert nicely summarized for us. Lay out the arguments.
He's been doing, he's been doing a great job reading everything into the record for the past 14 months. Or he's looking for a break. Maybe, maybe as early as next week. Bob, anything?
No, I don't have any questions. I would just ask, could you just forward us that CHAPA information just so we have it?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm assuming there's people here from, you know, in the public that would like.
Yep. Well, let's check in with Scott first before we turn it to public questions. Scott?
Attorney Moynihan, you have a list of dates and times that you had interactions with all these other departments. I didn't see the date and time. The request for the information off the website was taken down. When was the date and time of that?
I didn't make that request, sir, so I don't know when.
Key testimony, last meeting, you had mentioned that. Should I ask that to Ms. Bissonette?
Ms. Bissonette didn't ask that the information be taken down off the website. The request that we made was that the Town Planner correct or modify his referral because it had inaccurate information, which has since been done and is in your file, but we at no time asked for anything to be taken down from the website.
Okay. All right. I must have been misinformed from the last meeting because I was under the impression through your testimony that Ms. Bissonette spoke to somebody in the Town Manager's office in order for that to be removed. Is that not correct? Or am I mistaken?
Ms. Bissonette spoke with the Assistant Town Manager and requested at my suggestion that the Town Planner be asked by the Town Manager's office to either withdraw or correct his referral because it would contain inaccurate and incorrect information and we felt it was prejudicial. That was the request that was made. What the Assistant Town Manager or Town Manager did after that is on them. We have, we were not involved in that.
So I digress back to my initial question. When was the date of that? Are you aware?
Well, let's see. When the initial referral came in. Let me just check and see if I have it here. The date of the original referral was April 14, 2021. So it would have been, you know, sometime shortly after that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. That's all I have.
And Karen can correct me if I'm wrong because she was the one who discussed it with the Assistant Town Manager. And again, we were not, the Housing Trust was not intending or did not do anything untoward in that regard. They simply wanted to see the record corrected because the referral was so inaccurate. It did not discuss, it said the road hadn't been paved. There were, you know.
I appreciate that. I'm just looking for the date with us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And I see Ms. Bissonette is actually requesting to be elevated. So Justin, if we could go ahead and elevate Ms. Bissonette, please. All right, Ms. Bissonette, welcome.
Thank you.
Gearing yourself up there. Hello.
Hi. Thank you. Again, I will just go with what Laura said, Scott, if you have any more questions. But yes, I spoke with Peter Johnson Saab and my request was to ask that the information be corrected because the letter that he sent, that the Town Planner sent had erroneous information in it. So I asked that it be corrected.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. And Ms. Bissonette, would you like to add anything else before we turn it over to public comment?
Only that, you know, we've worked really hard on this project and a couple of people mentioned affordable housing. And my fear is that if it becomes, if it is even as difficult for other people as it has been for us, no one's going to build affordable housing. I mean, it's just, it's, this is over two years we've been trying to do this. I think I mentioned to you last time that, you know, we talked, you talked about affordability at the last hearing. I can tell you right now that this project wouldn't be feasible without the over $300,000 I've raised from our community. That's addition, in addition to the money that the town will be supporting the project with through the Affordable Housing Fund, which is community preservation money. So I would just say that, you know, we have a crisis. I get calls every day of people who, especially now with the cost of housing going up so high, they're being asked to vacate their rentals and they have 30 or 60 days to get out. Someone who's rented the house for 12 years. And I get these calls. And so, you know, I don't know if I'm, I mean, you have to live in a cave not to know that we have a crisis. I mean, it's on the front page of the paper almost every day. I mean, it's on the front page of the paper almost every day. And it breaks my heart. And one woman who called me seven months pregnant, as of June 30th, she has nowhere to go. And so I just think that, you know, I see this, I hear it every day, so I live it, and it is bad. And it just gets worse every day. So all of us need to be responsible for doing something about this. And you have to understand, we're a nonprofit, I'm the only employee. Thank God I have a wonderful Board of Directors and a wonderful attorney. And, but, you know, we really need your help in getting this done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bissonette. All right, we will turn it over to public comment. If anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon, and we will elevate you shortly. And I will get to another comment that's been put into the chat. But in the meantime, just anyone out there, click the raised hand icon. And if there's more than one person, just hang in there, and we'll elevate you. All right, I believe, oh, someone's been elevated. Attorney Forgione, sorry if I mispronounced that.
That's okay. It's Forgione.
Forgione. All right, so everything was, your letter was read into the record entirely?
Yes, thank you for that.
Have any additional comments?
Yeah, the letter pretty much sums it up. I just wanted to emphasize that our, you know, our main position is that there was a covenant signed between the Falmouth Planning Board and the Falmouth Housing Trust. In exchange for the determination of access, they were to build one unit of housing on this lot. It says it three times in three separate ways in this agreement. It says, first, one dwelling on, I believe, the title of the application. Then it says for one single unit, and then for one single family unit. The parties to this agreement contemplated that there was going to be one unit. I respected, Attorney Moynihan said that she, it was never anyone's intent to deceive, but the planning board at multiple meetings after, almost to a member, explained that they were all deceived, and they would not have approved the project had they known it was going to be four units. And that's our main, that's our main sticking point. And I know you guys want to keep it short and not get dragged into a long thing tonight. So I think I'll just end it there. But thank you. Thank you for your time.
We appreciate the brevity. But to play devil's advocate, because that's what I do during my day job, to Attorney Moynihan's point about, at that point in time, all they could legally apply for was, in fact, one house. So what do you say to that?
I would say that then in the covenant, there should have been more language that this project does not bar further building on that. The planning board, and who, I'm not sure who drafted it, but made a point to emphasize three separate times that this was to be one unit of housing and one single family. Because the road at that time and the lot at that time, in exchange for removing the unbuildable restriction, clearly couldn't handle any more than one unit. It couldn't handle even one unit, which is why it was unbuildable in the first place.
Understood. All right. Any board questions for Bob?
Yes, so my question would be, is there anything in the covenant that bars an application on this property as a 40B, which we know currently are allowed waivers? We've dealt with many of them. So is there anything directly related to the current covenant that would bar this application as a 40B?
Well, I would say the covenant itself bars the application as a 40B because it's not an approval, it's a private agreement. It's a restriction on the property.
That's my only question.
All right. Anything else from the board? All right. Thank you for your time tonight. All right, let's elevate, if we could bring up Mr. Tom Bott, please.
Chairman, could I just respond first briefly to those comments, if I may?
If you'd like, go ahead.
Very, very quickly, just while it's on the board's mind. So I think that the most telling evidence is the minutes of the November 5th and November 26th Planning Board hearings. And when you look at the intention of what this covenant was supposed to do, if you look at the November 5th minutes, which you have in your file, Mr. Rob Leary, after much discussion about how to impose conditions on this A&R Plan Approval, Mr. Rob Leary said, quote, "I would just like somebody to come up with a motion that we can vote on," end quote. And then the motion was made by Mr. Drewley that the plan contain a note that it is subject to a determination of access voted by the Planning Board November 5, 2019, and a covenant of the parties filed herewith, and have them have a covenant drafted and signed by all parties that no building permit shall be issued for this parcel until the conditions of the determination of access are completed. That's all that was decided. The statement by Attorney Forgione that the covenant does not contain language that would bar further development actually supports what Attorney Freeman has said in his opinion. Because if a restriction is going to be a land use restriction, there should be prohibitive language in the restriction. Prohibitive language, not positive language, as suggested by the attorney. So there is no prohibitive language in this covenant that says that there shall not be any further development. There shall only be one house, etc. It doesn't exist. So that's a very important point because restrictions are prohibitive language. And there's no need to state in any agreement that somebody can go forward with a 40B application. I mean, that's, it's just not necessary to have permissive language included as to what somebody might be able to do in the future. But it is necessary to have prohibitive language if you're going to take the position that something's prohibited. And that doesn't exist here, and that's a very, very important point. So thank you for that. Also, the references to the one single family unit, yes, they are there. But again, that's all we could be there for. That's all we were there for, was one unit under the zoning bylaw. That's all we could ask for. So that's why those references are there. But the lack of prohibitive language in that covenant is the key to all of this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Moynihan. And while I have the chance before I lose it, I'll read in Joan Bates's comments in the chat. Joan Bates, 29 Ridlands Road, and FHT Board Member here again. Please be aware from our experience in affordable housing, many, many young families seeking to live here, own cars, and do not require public transportation. As a matter of fact, many, many families in Falmouth do not live near public transportation, although we are fortunate to have quite a range of such services in Falmouth. All right. And we did elevate Mr. Bott. Mr. Bott, welcome. I see you turned on your video there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Tom Bott. I'm the Town Planner here in Falmouth, Mass. I've been a practicing planner in the Commonwealth for 23 years, the last three years and 66 days here in Falmouth. Over that time, work and the teams that I've led have been recognized by the Massachusetts Historical Commission and as well as a leading by example award from the Department of Energy Resources and a Smart Growth Energy Award for 40-hour zoning and design that would net about 144 units of affordable housing. In a transient development, I've also created inclusionary housing bylaws that require 10% of new development to be affordable. A track record of creating affordable housing opportunities in appropriate locations. Per my job description, I deal with the overall management of planning and land use and other community-related functions within the town. We do this on a broad range of technical planning and community development issues, serving as an advisor to board members, staff, and elected officials in their decision-making process. I'm responsible for coordinating all planning activities related to community development. I assist the town in planning and land use decisions, representing the interests of the town in implementing the planning boards and other town policies. I produce technically sound and legally tenable decisions for the planning board and other land use agencies on regulatory matters and provide technical support to staff members for 40B applications. In fact, in your comprehensive permit rules, the town planner is identified as a local board, which also includes the town engineer and the town planner. And I do this under the administrative direction of the town manager. Per my job description, function independently and consult with the town manager or appropriate board when clarification or interpretation of policies or procedures is required. Now, in that role, I have been very involved in Lewis Neck Road, originally starting in May of 2018, shortly after I arrived. And it was the subject of an A&R plan. And during my career in Massachusetts, I've overseen some 300 A&R plans, but only one that involved a covenant. The parcel is now owned by Falmouth Housing Trust. The reason why is back to access. And access is defined as required under Massachusetts General Law. Our bylaw also parrots that language as well. But under Chapter 181, Section 81L, the planning board is in charge of designating what is appropriate access to Dr. Foreman's question at the last hearing. What sort of way was Lewis Neck Road? It's that way that was in existence when subdivision control law became effective in the town. And the planning board, having the opinion of the planning board that there is sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular access in relationship to the proposed use of the land. So in the case of Lewis Neck Road, the planning board looked at this and said, it's a very narrow road. It is longer than we would typically see in a subdivision. It doesn't have a second way out. It doesn't have any way to turn around. And frankly, we wouldn't approve it at all. But the planning board looked at it and said, well, we'd like to do something to help out with affordable housing. And there had been various suggestions from the May 2018 meeting with the planning board that maybe we can put a couple of different houses on that. The planning board wasn't particularly keen on that. There had been a lot of discussion with me and the folks at Falmouth Housing Trust about if you're going to put four on there, it's not going to pass muster, it's not going to be approved because it's too many units for the development. And so getting to the point where Bob Leary, who's with us tonight and ready to give his perspective from the planning board's perspective, because the planning board voted to have him represent them, they wanted to do something to create this lot, to create this buildable lot. Because when it was split in 2011, the builders has got, half of their lot is buildable, and the other half had a note that said not buildable based on that grade, width, and construction of the road. So the planning board actually approved a couple of different approvals for this piece of land. One which was rescinded because they said at one point, well, we're going to do this, but only for the Falmouth Housing Trust, only for affordable housing. And because the fire department said, yeah, it should be okay. Town Council pointed out that the board basically relegated their responsibility under 4181L to render their opinion on suitable width. And when we do that, we talk with those various board, those departments that deal with these sort of things, engineering, fire, and things like that. So we came up with a proposal to clear back some of the bush, some of the trees, and some of the shrubs and things like that in order to get a fire truck in there. And the board was very uncomfortable with the fact that this was a potential to open this sort of Pandora's Box on Lewis Neck Road. So by mutual agreement, Falmouth Housing Trust entered into a covenant. The covenant is not a local regulation. It's not zoning. It's an agreement between two parties. And the covenant is in effect until it's been removed. And it could be removed. Falmouth Housing Trust could come to the selectmen and ask to have the covenant removed. The selectmen hold the interest in land. It may have to go to town meeting for something like that. But as it exists right now, the covenant is in place on this piece of property and is because of the planning board's responsibility under 4181L. It's not local regulation, it's the state law. And so that is the issue here, and that's what the planning board has said in letters they have sent to Mass Housing. There's a covenant on the property. We've heard from Mass Housing in their footnote that a covenant cannot be overridden by the local zoning board of appeals, no offense to the board. It is this agreement that has to be overcome. So the board, in their responsibility under subdivision control, created this building lot, created this opportunity, put a dwelling unit on the property. But because of the covenant, they said one dwelling unit, and that was all that the planning board felt, in their opinion, was accessible for the piece of property. The property next door that Mr. Fender wanted to create, the board did something similar for him, but basically because of Mr. Fender's efforts to open the road up, to get these trees and these shrubs and things back that the Falmouth Housing Trust couldn't do because they did not have a relationship with the folks on Lewis Neck Road that Mr. Fender did to cut back trees on their property and pull things back. So Mr. Fender got essentially the same thing that the Falmouth Housing Trust did. A subdivision, an A&R plan endorsed by the board where one lot is buildable and the other half is not buildable until the road has been upgraded. So there wasn't a covenant required for Mr. Fender's property because frankly, there hadn't been any previous discussion with Mr. Fender or the planning board about creating multiple units on the site as there had been with the Falmouth Housing Trust. So it's been my opinion that the covenant is in place because the planning board's responsibility under 81L is, what is that opinion of the planning board? Is it sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relationship to the proposed use of land? That's Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 4181L. That's why it's in place, that's why it's there. And that's why the planning board voted to endorse the plan to make this a buildable lot. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. Any questions from the board for Mr. Bott? Ken?
Yeah, so I think where I'm getting, having heartburn is they had an approved lot, through the planning board covenant. Now they, and the understanding of the planning board, if, you know, I believe that that was the understanding, that it was for one building lot. But under Chapter 40B, they then separately can come to the zoning board and ask for, you know, higher density on that one building lot. So we, I don't see the route under Chapter 40B for denying. If you can tell me what that route is, that'd be great. There is a, you know, I mean, there might be justification for private property legal action. But that's beyond our purview, right? We don't make that decision.
Well, the planning board's contention and my contention, we work together on these things, is the covenant was put in place under Massachusetts General Law. It's eligible for one unit and not for under 40B. Now, when that covenant is removed, then chances are you could proceed with as many units as you like out there. But it's in agreement, and the agreement is in place. And until that agreement is removed by a vote of, whether it's the selectmen or a town meeting to remove the covenant, then I think that the development is constrained to that agreement, that mutual agreement between the Falmouth Housing Trust and the planning board, now the town of Falmouth, that this is why they got that permission to build that one unit. Otherwise, there would still be a label on that lot that says not a buildable lot. If the covenant's removed, then my opinion is that the planning board or the applicants perfectly free to pursue as many as they can. But there is an agreement, a mutual agreement between the two parties that's in place and needs to be removed, in my opinion.
And that agreement is between the planning board representing the town, I guess. And, go ahead.
But the planning board can enter into that agreement, but the town holds the land interest. The town, the planning board can't hold a land interest.
Okay, so the town holds, the town holds the land interest.
That the town has to release that interest, either through the selectmen or through a town meeting. And I don't know exactly how that plays out. But until that's released, I don't see how you move forward.
But it's the Falmouth Housing Trust which is requesting, which is not, which is a, not a part of the town. which is not, which is a not a part of the town.
I would venture to say the Falmouth Housing Trust should likely request that covenant be removed. And if they're successful, then, you know, it's, it's pretty straightforward at that point. How many units does the zoning board of appeals feel should be on the site?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Attorney Moinhan.
I just, I think a couple of things need to be corrected in what Mr. Bott has said. Number one, the covenant was not imposed under state law. The access determination was not imposed under state law. If you're coming to the planning board for an endorsement of an A and R plan approval on a road and you haven't had prior plan approvals on that road, for example, maybe you're looking at a state law issue. But here, the application for the access determination is under the Falmouth zoning bylaw. That's always been the practice in the town. Mr. Bott, due to his wealth of experience and being new to the town, decided that the policy should be different than Mr. Curry had employed and required that once the access determination was issued under the local zoning bylaw, that the applicant apply for an A and R plan endorsement. But let's be clear that we're looking at two forty, one seventy-nine of the zoning bylaw. No permit shall be issued to build a new principal structure on, on any lot unless the lot has the minimum required frontage on either a public way, a way shown on a plan approved or endorsed under subdivision control law, or three, a way in existence prior to February seventeenth nineteen fifty-six, which has been improved to the satisfaction of the planning board as to adequate width, grades, et cetera. That's what this application is about. So, so Mr. Bott's discussion of state law, I, I think that's confusing the issue here. We're looking at an access determination under the local zoning bylaw. The statement that the covenant is in effect until it's removed. What is there to remove? There's no express prohibition in this covenant. If the covenant said, and no further building permit shall be issued for this property until this covenant is released or until the planning board reviews this again, that might be the case. But there's nothing here to release or remove. It was an express statement that the applicant perform the work and in exchange, the applicant will get its building permit. That was the bargain or the agreement. So there's nothing to release in terms of a use restriction. And, and, you know, I, I don't think it's accurate to, to cite the mass housing site approval letter as in the footnote stating that the covenant was the quote, the covenant cannot be overridden, overridden by local zoning. What Mass Housing said was that a land use restriction essentially expressly prohibits something like in the Wells case cannot be overridden by a local zoning citing Wells. So that's a very important point, and I think it, it was stated inaccurately. The William Fender application, the statement that no covenant was required for William Fender, and this is very important because I think it's implied by that that somehow the process of the Falmouth Housing Trust, that this covenant was used to prohibit multiple houses. The reason there was no covenant for William Fender was because he owned the land. He got his access determination. And the planning board required him to actually do the work and, and meet the conditions of the determination before he could come back for the A and R plan endorsement, so that when he comes back for the A and R plan endorsement to remove or lift his unbuildable note, the work's all done. So there's no need for an agreement in writing with Mr. Fender. And that is, is very important. In the case of the housing trust, the housing trust did not own the land. It was under purchase and sale agreement. It could not enter in and make the same kind of agreement as Mr. Fender has been able to do. So again, I think not stated accurately that there was no covenant for Mr. Fender because in the case of the housing trust, the planning board was utilizing the covenant to prohibit multiple houses. The evidence does not show that at all. And you have that at, you know, in detail in your file. Look at those planning board minutes. You know, from sitting at a board meeting when things are discussed and one of you says, gee, you know, if we're going to enter into this agreement, we should really make sure that these people need to come back to us if they're going to build more houses out there, because we know they're going to build more houses out there. So we should really make sure that that's in this. That wasn't said. That wasn't discussed. It was never mentioned at any time by any of the staff or any of the planning board. So, you know, we object to this now coming back and saying that that was the case. If you look at those minutes, you would have seen some reference in those minutes to something like that, even an inference. There's nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Moinhan. I, I want to make sure this public comment period isn't a back and forth between everyone. But Scott, what's
For Attorney Moinhan. During your course of conversation with the planning board, did you ever or your, or your client ever express the fact that you were going to go for more than one house?
Well, Karen,
I can answer that. Yeah, I can answer that question.
Initially, so go ahead.
April third, two thousand nineteen, I had a face-to-face meeting with Mr. Bott. I brought him a preliminary plan with four houses on it. I then followed that up with an email to him with an attachment saying, I'm not sure if I left this. Here is the attachment. I remember the day. I have the email.
I'm, I'm talking about a, a meeting, a public meeting with, with, that's on the record. Did you have, was that one of, at one of the planning board meetings?
That, that was, that was not at a planning board meeting. That was at a meeting that the two of us had and then a follow-up with an email.
So, so there is no public record of that conversation. It's your word against Mr. Bott's word on how that conversation went, right?
There's no word. I have a follow-up email. If you'd like me
All right. What about in May of two thousand and eighteen?
All right.
I believe in May of two thousand and eighteen.
Attorney Moinhan.
Met with the planning board.
I'm, I'm not going to allow this meeting to go off the rails during the public
Okay.
comment period.
I just have one more question.
We have a lot of people up right now.
Well, we were asked a question, Mr. Chairman. I don't think it was answered properly. So Karen
I, I understand, but if we were live in person, there'd be a podium. I'd be recognizing one person at a time with everyone with their microphones on. They can chime in whenever they want on Zoom. And thankfully, this is the last night for that. Ms. Bessonut to Scott's question. Would, would, I think you were saying there was an email or something to that effect.
Yes, there is an email. It's April third, two thousand nineteen. And it was a follow-up to our meeting on that day. So there is an email and the town planner has seen it, the town assistant town. I'm sorry, the town manager has seen it, the assistant town manager has seen it, the housing coordinator has seen it. They all know that
Why, why wasn't it submitted to the file if it was pertinent to the case?
I can't answer that question. It is on the list. It's on your list, Scott. It is on your list. It's on your list of the communications that I had with the town.
Okay.
Anything else, Scott?
Yeah, just one quick thing. When, you, Attorney Moinhan keeps referring to at, at the close of the planning board process, a permit would be issued. Was there ever any identification of what that permit was for? One house, four houses, ten houses? Is there any determination of what that permit would, would entail?
The permit, the permit.
Offensive at the end of the, a planning board process. You said a permit at, at the dissolution of, of that case, a permit would be granted after the road construction is, is satisfied. What is that? What's the definition of that permit?
That would be a per, a building permit for what, for a single family dwelling, which was in fact issued. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Any last questions from the board for Tom Bott? Or Ken, go ahead.
I guess the question is, it, you know, sort of goes to the question Scott was asking. When, when that meeting took place and Karen told you they were thinking about four units, was that before or after the access had been granted and the planning board made?
That, that was well before. And in the discussion we had, I said, you know, in my opinion, the planning board is not going to give you access for four units at the end of a road that doesn't meet the basic tenants of a, of a cul-de-sac. Under the subdivision regulations, you got a five hundred foot long maximum length for a cul-de-sac. This property is seven hundred, eight hundred feet down the road and it's on a twelve-foot wide strip of dirt. I didn't see any way that the planning board would approve that. And I suggested you likely might be best just to go straight with a forty B. But because the lot had a note on it that said it's not buildable, it's like taking a landlocked piece of land that doesn't have any frontage and say, I want to put a forty B out in the middle of a cornfield that doesn't have a road. It's not a buildable lot without the frontage in front of it and without the planning board's opinion under eighty-one L sub suitable width, length, grade, that it wouldn't be a buildable lot.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Bott from the board?
Yeah, I, I have a question, Mr. Bott, and this has more to do with our process. It was brought up earlier. I know FHA at some point had made some requests by the assistant town manager because they felt some information was incorrect and neither one had corrected or withdrawn. This board saw public information removed from our website, which interferes in our hearing process. I know that you did not remove the information for the website. Did the assistant town manager, the manager's office remove that information?
That's, that's my impression. That's my impression.
All right, thank you.
I, I don't have any authority to have, to tell Noreen to take something down from your website.
Thank you.
All right. Last call. Anything for Mr. Bott? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Bott. Attorney Moinhan, I'm, I'm really not trying to make this a back and forth every time that someone speaks. I'm, I'm trying to get through the public here, public comment.
I just, one quick thing to point out since Mr. Zalinski was asking. There is a memo in your file, sir, dated June eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen from Mr. Bott to the planning board where he specifically states the goal for Falmouth Housing Trust is to build four affordable units on the site. That was in two thousand and nineteen, well before the proceedings at the planning board. So they had been advised by their staff member of that intention. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Good, you're, that they were informed of that memo.
Correct.
My question was simply, was it brought up on the minutes during that process with the planning board? And I'll yield to the chair. I know you want to get moving on this.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. I do want to get through public comment. And Mr. Bott, if, if we're leaving you, thank you for your time tonight.
I'm, I'll, I'll be here. I'm, I've got plenty of things to do. Put me back in the galley and I'll be, come back up if you need me.
Sounds good. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. And if anyone out there has a question, comment or concern, click the raised hand icon and we will get you elevated.
I believe Mr. Leary from the planning board is in the gallery and wishing to be elevated.
He does have his hand up. If we could elevate Mr. Leary, please.
Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Larry.
My name is Robert Leary and I'm a planning board member. And for the past twenty-eight years, I've been a construction supervisor for Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod. So affordable, my commitment to affordable housing is longstanding. And in some ways, that's kind of a detriment, especially in a situation like this, because I kind of look at Lewis Neck Road as the road to hell paved with good intentions. I just wanted to let you know what the planning board was thinking when we went through this process, what we heard and what we believed from the attorneys and the applicants that we were looking at a piece of property at the end of or near the end of a small dirt road. And they were looking to build an affordable unit on it. And they have a sympathetic ear when it comes to the planning board. And we try and make things happen if, if we can. But after the site visit and looking at the property and the access to it, we, we didn't feel that it, the access was, was very good and that the only thing that we could look at was maybe cutting back the trees and it make, we looked at the height of the trees. And this is more for emergency access because things that we look at are number of vehicles that are going to be traversing a road, the road length, the access for emergency vehicles, drainage and the number of homes that it's going to serve. And Attorney Moinhan mentioned the minutes from November fifth. And I just wanted to read some of the notes from that. Attorney Robert Amen, the conditions have not changed. This road has existed and there are two houses past this lot. It's been suitable for six houses that are there. One more house doesn't change the suitability of the road. Attorney Moinhan, you're going to have water and puddling when you have heavy rains. It's serving a few houses and we are asking to have it serve one more house. So this notion that we weren't notified or that we were notified that there was going to be more than one house on this lot is ludicrous. And I take great offense to that because we had at least six other people on the planning board that agreed that we were talking about one house and that we were trying to accommodate Falmouth Housing Trust to allow them access on this road that it had, they come before us with a plan for four other houses. We would have looked at the road conditions. We would have looked at twenty-two-foot paved sidewalks, street lighting, a hammerhead, all those other conditions that you usually apply to a forty B project. And none of that was ever brought up to us. We were looking at one house and one house only. And you can tell my blood is boiling from what I've been hearing tonight and what I've read in the paper. Because we were misled. And I, using the term misled is a mild term. Because there was no discussion about more than one house on this, on this lot. And we, as a planning board, we do have the right under section eighty-one A that allows us to waive strict compliance with the rules and regulations and set conditions on the lots, which buildings may be erected and the number of buildings which may be erected. And that's one of the tenants that we were operating under. That maybe they couldn't do a number of buildings, but we could at least get one building in there and get one family into an affordable unit.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Larry. Any questions from the board for Mr. Larry at all?
Yeah, Mr. Leary, so I know you said you weren't aware of it. So was anyone on the planning board that you know of privy to that memo that, that they noted tonight from June eighteenth? They'd mentioned that the goal was to build four houses on the parcel?
Not that I'm aware of.
And my only other question is, when we do these review processes, of course, with the forty Bs, the referrals go out. So the fire department seems to be satisfied with everything as the road is current. Did you have any other concerns regarding the fire department's referral?
We, we usually will abide by the fire department's referrals.
All right, thank you.
All right. Ken, were you indicating that you wanted us to say something?
I, I think Robert asked my question basically, you know, which was, you know, this memo existed. Apparently, the meeting had occurred prior, the meeting between Tom and Karen or Laura had occurred prior to the to the meeting with the planning board. And so the intention was out there, but somehow it apparently didn't get communicated to the, to the board.
All right. Any, any other board members? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Scott.
Mr. Larry, just for the record, you, your board voted for you to, on their behalf, the complete board, correct?
Could you say that again, please?
I said you're, the planning board voted for you to represent them in the
Yes.
And it was a board vote, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Any other board members? All right, Mr. Larry, thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bessonut, I see your hand raised. I, I want to hold off on any comments from you or Attorney Moinhan at the moment. I, I really do want to get through public comment before we turn it back to you. We do have an We do have an, okay, if we could elevate attorney, I'm going to mess up his name again, Forgone. Attorney Forgone, I know I'm mispronouncing that, but I know we we recognized you briefly before. Well, we can entertain another quick comment for you.
Yeah, that's totally fine. I'll make this brief. Getting getting off from the planning board meeting, that's I just want to return to the covenant itself, actually. And the idea that the covenant needed to say, you know, this doesn't, this won't be a 40B or we won't approve six units and whatnot. The conditional language on the dwelling is the word one and the word single. It says it multiple times. So that is the that is the negative prescriptive language of this document. It doesn't need to affirmatively say that this this forbids exclusively 40B because the language used does that already. It says one and it says single, it says multiple times. And I also just wanted to address a point about whether the board can deny, whether the board can approve this even though the planning board denied it, the ZBA in that sense. And it's the difference is is that the determination of access is zoning. And that is what the planning board did. However, in conjunction with the determination of access, they made a private covenant. And 40B cannot override a private covenant. So if it was just a determination of access, that would be a different story. However, in exchange for that determination of access, they signed a private covenant and the planning board understood from the testimony prepared here tonight that it was going to be for one unit. That is why they signed that covenant. And so I just wanted to clear up those points and I'll I'll return to public comments.
Can I ask a follow up question then?
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah. So so I guess my question, it's sort of the same question I asked earlier, is then under 40B, it's before us. And if we were to say, you know, you may have, we approve you for one affordable house. What do we do? Just cite the covenant and say this restricts what is allowable under 40B?
Um, yeah, I would say so. I would say that it can't be anymore. I mean, that the Wells Avenue case that the state cited is directly on point here. And I'm not going to, you know, read that for everyone, but it highlights the difference between zoning provisions such as determination of access and a deed restriction such as an easement, which if this covenant is a deed restriction. And the and the court was very clear in that that 40B can't override that deed restriction, this covenant. And so from the board's perspective, yes, they could they could cite to the covenant and say, we approve, we approve one affordable unit here according to this covenant. And if you want to do more units, you have to remove the covenant.
So I have a question. So let's say they went forward and they built one affordable unit.
Yep.
Now the covenant's released. Now they apply for a modification for a duplex on the same site. So you now have three units. What's the difference if that would be allowed versus what they're asking for now?
Because you're making an end around the process, the
I'm not making the end around. I'm just saying they would be satisfying the covenant the way you've stated your opinion. And they would still have the right to apply to us as a 40B. I'm asking the question because 40Bs have always been complicated. Everyone has issues, you know. It's unfortunate, but if butters don't realize that even our hands are tied many times on setbacks and buffering. So and I understand it does state one house in here, but if they did take out a permit for one house and then the covenant gets released, they would still have the rights to go forward with additional homes. It wouldn't. Are the neighbors under the understanding that if we gave a decision that only allowed one affordable house, that this parcel would no longer be available if they wanted to modify and do additional units?
Can you repeat that?
So are the neighbors, yeah, are the neighbors of the understanding that if we gave a permit for one affordable house that then satisfies this covenant, that they would not have the opportunity at that point to come back and modify for additional units on the site?
Yes, they would have to. Yes, they are under the standing. They'd have to reapply and go through the comprehensive permit project again.
So they know that there is the possibility, even if they did the covenant, you would get another three units on this parcel?
Yes, after the building permit is issued and the covenant is released, then that they're they are aware that that is, you know, that that could happen.
I thank you.
All right. Anything else from the board? All right, seeing none. And I'm sorry, correct me on your last name again.
Oh, Forgianni.
Forgianni, Attorney Forgianni, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other public comment? I'm not seeing any. All right. So I suppose back to Attorney Moynihan.
Thank you. Just in response to Attorney Forgianni, in the legal opinion of Peter Freeman that we supplied to the board, there's a very important reference to the Wells case, which was a prohibitive use restriction held by the city of Newton, specifically saying that something could not be done. And the court held that because that was a restriction that was held by the municipality, the City of Newton Board of Aldermen acting in its legislative capacity and not in the capacity of a board acting under zoning. The distinction is that in this case, the planning board was clearly not acting as the town's legislative body. The planning board was acting in its zoning capacity under the zoning bylaw. And Attorney Freeman has said in his opinion that because of that factor, if the this zoning board feels that that covenant somehow needs to be waived, this board can stand in the shoes of the planning board and do that. We don't feel it's necessary because as Mr. Dugan has pointed out, the issuance of the building permit, which you have in your file, satisfied the covenant. The covenant is a non-issue. Its terms have been satisfied already by the issuance of the building permit. So, but in any event, I point that out because if the board feels that there's some waiver required, you have the authority to do that. Mr. Leary's comments, you know, I've responded to those in writing at length. I think the board gets it. You know, if the planning board was confused, that's different than being misled. We did not mislead the planning board. We were there for an access determination for one home. That's all that we were entitled to apply for. We were not there for a 40B project. We were not there to discuss four units or three units because it was not relevant to that proceeding. What was relevant to the proceeding was whether that gravel road was suitable for one building permit, one more building permit, and that was it. And if the planning board feels that they were misled, it was not by the applicant. They may have been confused, but we certainly did not mislead them in that process. The fact that the building permit has issued puts the status of the lot as any other lot in town. Anybody could come in and apply for a 40B for multiple units if they wanted to on that lot. So those are, you know, there's been a lot of stuff that's gone on about this covenant, but when you break it down, I think it's very simple. You have to look at it. Is this a prohibitive restriction? Does it prohibit something? I say the answer is no, it does not. Does the covenant expressly say it has to be released? It does not say that. Has the covenant been satisfied? Yes, it has. The work was done. The permit was issued. Then the central question for the board is, is Lewis Neck Road as it exists right now suitable for the project as proposed? That's the central question for the board, not the covenant. And the answer to that I submit is that it is well, it's been paved. It has, it's been widened. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Moynihan. Any other questions from the board?
May I ask a question? And I don't know who, whether it's going to be Laura or Karen. When this process was going on, was Mr. Fender already in the process of building that house on that road as well?
No.
So this is an added house beyond what you're proposing, the one that Mr. Fender has dug a cellar for and they're pouring now?
That's correct, but he built one prior to that. This is his second home that he's building on this.
I'm just trying to, there is another house. If you get your four there, there's another house. There'll be five on that road.
We're requesting three.
I get that.
Yeah.
So you're going to have three. He just put a new one in. That happened outside of or after your your request for three. For one.
Yeah, Karen, can I answer that? That's correct.
You requested one through the planning board. Mr. Fender requested one through the through the planning board. So the planning board was under the assumption that there was going to be two more houses. But if you get your three and Mr. Fender's already started his, obviously there'll be four on this road now, right?
That is correct, but keep in mind that when the one house you tallied for the housing trust was approved, it was a gravel road lesser width, no drainage improvements. They were approving the building permit for the housing trust on the basis of the road in that condition. When Mr. Fender came along, they said, we want you to pave that road. We want you to widen that road and we want you to install drainage. And they gave him an access determination that required those improvements. Now we have the housing trust coming in, looking for you to look at the suitability of the road as it now exists based on the improvements that Mr. Fender made. So yes, you're correct in the numbers, four houses, but we now have a much better road. We have a widened road, a road with drainage and a road that's paved. And that's the critical issue. Is that road suitable in your opinion for the three houses that the housing trust is proposing? And if not, why? The fire department says it's fine. Engineering says we defer to the fire department. And quite frankly, we really haven't had much evidence of anything to say that there's anything wrong with it. So that's the decision that the board has to make.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jim.
Thank you, Scott. Ken.
It's a private road. Is that correct?
Yes.
You know, are there? I was involved in a lot once where they said, I was told we couldn't couldn't develop with that. We couldn't use that lot because we would overburden the easement on a private road. What's, is that an issue?
Here it's not an issue because I think quite frankly, you have a paved road. You have a road that's in better
This was a paved road. It wasn't. It's just a question of how the other homeowners, you know, what their rights of access were and whether they had a right to limit further access.
Well, I don't think they, I don't think they have the right to limit further access. And you have to look at it a comparative analysis when you're talking about overburdening and easement. You have to look at the quality of other roads in the town of Falmouth, particularly ones off Central Avenue, Maravista, that are a narrower dirt roads that serve more houses than Lewis Neck Road does. So if you're going to talk about the possibly overburdening and easement, you have to show some adverse impact as a result of that. Here, because of the condition of that road is much better than it was a year ago, I don't I don't think that's an issue at all here.
All right. Seeing the chat, we're, I guess we are beyond public comment, but I'll read it in. Joan Bates here. Again, please be aware that the condition of the road was a major block to the development of anything on the road. Modern times seek to improve road conditions for homes and access to fire services, trash removal and so forth. The conditions of the road have changed dramatically. This makes the development a different situation than the earlier process also. All right. Anything else from the board? All right. Not seeing anything from the board. How would the board like to proceed? Bob, you're muted.
Sorry, we're going to need a continuation just to review all the information that just came in on the 10th. It's the Forgianni's information, Mr. Miss Lorahan's responses and everything that came in through tonight. I don't know what we have available next for date.
Noreen, what do we have available?
Yeah. So you have a pretty heavy schedule coming up with other 40Bs that are booked as well. Really, the first date you would have essentially some space with additional time would be July 29th.
Yes, the question I have is whether you need a continuation for that or just, I mean, are you going to get new information or you just need to close it and then have discussion?
I'm actually, I'm fine with closing it and having discussion. I mean, I don't think I need more information. I just need time to review all the stuff that came in this evening.
I agree with Bob. It's just, it was a massive amount when the
No, I I'm not saying we would, we would make a decision, you know.
Right, but just to close, so no more information comes in. Yeah.
So if we, if we, Noreen, if we close the hearing, so there's no more submittals, does that still give us the opportunity if we need comments by town council or anyone, any questions we have?
Well, so here's the problem is if you close, you don't have any ability to ask or receive and, you know, have questions answered or get further information. So I guess I would probably advocate that you not close until you are satisfied that you have everything you need for the file.
Yeah, because all fairness to the applicant, they would need time to, they would
Review. Yeah, we would have to do a continue, a continuation of the 29th.
I mean, the other thing you could do would be to continue to that night. And if you find that you don't need to take in anymore, you've got no questions, you can just close right away.
Just close right away and just have a discussion and vote on it. Sure.
Can I make that motion as described by the administrator?
Just just a moment, Scott. I'll just have Attorney Moynihan.
You know, our preference would be to close the hearing, obviously, and move forward because it's just, it's just more time and more delay. The letters that came in today were read into the record. I honestly don't think they really said anything new. You know, the information that Attorney Forgianni provided to you is what the town planner has been saying. My response is the same. So I, you know, you have Attorney Freeman's memo. I mean, that information is has been with you for some time, you know. Keeping the hearing open, I don't see how you can stop further comment and further, you know, public involvement that's going to just bog this down further with the same issues. So, you know, unless you close it and, you know, on the condition that, you know, you can seek advice from town council, that's different. But I just think that that we're just dragging this on and on and on and the same issue is just going to get redebated. So we would ask you to close the hearing and move forward.
All right. And respectfully, Attorney Moynihan, I don't think anything's being dragged on here. This is only the second night of a 40B.
We've been at this for two years.
But in front of this, in front of this board, and I understand how, I know how long the process is. I have a complete understanding of that, but in front of this board, it's only been two nights.
Yeah, I respect that and I apologize for that. We're just exhausted by the process, to be quite frank with you.
No, no apology necessary. I think we're all, I think we're all getting exhausted on Zoom, so I understand. So with that having been said, what would the board like to do?
So I would make a motion to continue to July 29th. With the understanding that we will probably close the hearing at that meeting.
Very good. All right. Would anyone like to second that?
Second.
Second by Scott. Thank you, Scott. All right. So motion to continue, straight continuance to July 29th. Made by Bob. Attorney Moynihan, we are in the middle of.
I, I'm sorry.
All right. Motion to continue to July 29th made by Bob, second by Scott. Roll call, vote. Where are we? Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
Thank you, Ken. Ed? Ed, you're muted. I'm sorry. You got unmute yourself. One last time.
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Thank you, Ed. Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Thank you, Bob. Scott?
Scott, let's go.
Thank you, Scott. And TJ Hurry, I. So passes unanimously. We are continued on this until July 29th. Attorney Moynihan and did Ms. Bessonut drop off? There, there you are. Thank you. Thank you both for your time tonight.
Thank you. I just wanted to make the request that, that if there is going to be any further written comment from the public, that it be submitted at least one week in advance of that hearing. That's all, which is the, my understanding of the procedure, but it wasn't followed by the abutter's attorney. So we'd appreciate that. That being a request here.
Thank you, Attorney Moynihan. All right. So that takes care of that one. We do have one more continuance. And does everyone, about a five minute break?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Yeah, I think, yeah. All right. We'll take a five minute break. We'll be right back. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
he slipped out of the meeting. So he's getting off easy tonight and we'll celebrate him after his final meeting next week. All right. Up next. Uh, first of all, it's 9:12. So I'll do a little bit of housekeeping. The board's business ends at 9:30. Uh, I'll go ahead and just make the preemptive motion to continue to 10 o'clock. That way we don't interrupt our next hearing or anything after that. Uh, so I'll make the motion to continue to 10 o'clock. Would anyone like to second that?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. And as always, we don't have to go all the way to 10. So all right, motion to 10 o'clock made by myself. Second by James. Roll call, vote. James?
James Morse, I.
Thank you, James. Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I.
Thank you, Scott. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Thank you, Mary. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Thank you, Ed. Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Thank you, Bob. Motion passes unanimously. We will continue the board's business till 10 o'clock. Up next, we have application 16-21 Noonan 183 Surf Drive in Falmouth requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the non-conforming dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures. And on behalf of the applicant, we do have Attorney Clower. So if he could be elevated, please. All right. His attorney Clower is getting elevated. I'll just say the board members voting on this one are myself, Ed Van Kuren, Bob Dugan, Mary Berry and James Morris. Attorney Clower, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth. And I represent the applicants, Joseph and Mary Noonan, the owners of 183 Surf Drive. This is our third hearing with you on this matter. So I think you know that we're seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling, which is located in a VE15 velocity zone, flood zone. And that location and the scope of the renovations triggered the necessity of coming into compliance with the FEMA standards. Meaning we must raise and rebuild the existing structure and elevate it to be two feet above the flood zone elevation, which means elevation 17 or about 12 feet above the existing grade. Due to our existing non-conformities and proposed lot coverage by structure of 21.8%. This does require a special permit under 243C and 24069E, which we've gone over at length. Since our last meeting, we did submit comparison plans, as was requested, showing the existing and proposed structures, which I'd be happy to share with the board, share with the, the audience, I suppose. If I may, Mr. Chair. So we showed the existing structure and the proposed structure here. You can see the existing structure is a height of 17 feet, one inch. And we're proposing, and that's above grade. We're proposing a structure that's 39 feet, four inches, again, above. That's, that's based on elevations. It's the, the base elevation there is five feet. So it's 34 feet, six inches is the proposed height. But I thought it was instructive and important to show the proposed structure absent the, the, the elevating peers, because that's, that is what's required. We, we don't have a say in that. We don't have a choice. So what's being proposed, the structure itself, that the dwelling portion of that structure is 23 feet. That's six feet higher than, than what exists today. We are not taking this house and tripling it or trying to maximize it as much as humanly possible. This is an expansion of this house into a full-time residence is, is what it's becoming. And as you'll see here, it's a change of six feet. It's not, it is not some astronomical increase. It, I understand why there might be some consternation because of the fact it is required to be put on these peers. But again, we shouldn't be penalized for coming into compliance with the flood zone standards. It should be encouraged. So we did submit those and I thought that was, that was, you know, pretty illustrative of what's being proposed today. The applicants have worked really hard to design an appropriate home to fit with the neighborhood and to address the concerns of the board and their abutter. This project represents an improvement to the property in many ways and meets all the necessary requirements. We have a non-conforming setback that's being eliminated. The, the front yard setback is being improved from 21 feet to 28 feet. The three foot non-conforming, three foot contour is being improved. There's no new non-conformity created. We're adding our 1,500 square feet of mitigation plantings, which is an improvement both visually and also a better protection of the resource area of being Trunk River. It, it does fit in with the area. We submitted the lot comparison, looking at 26 houses within 300 feet. And of those 26, nine have larger footprint. Eight have larger gross floor areas. This is an appropriate design for the area in terms of height and size, and it's in line with all the other homes along Trunk River. The proposed structure is not substantially more detrimental. It's a significant improvement. I think it's also important to look at the changes that the applicants made since last year. There, there's been a lot of them. They've improved the setback from Miss Arkeys to the north, seven feet, from 16 feet to 23 feet. Only 10 is required. The setback to the tidal waters of Vineyard Sound has been improved from nine feet to 10. The front yard setback's been improved. It was going to be eliminated at 26, but now it's improved even further at 28. The building height was reduced by, by six inches. The massing of the building was reduced. The proposed lot coverage by structure was reduced from 23.2% down to 21.8%. And the gross floor area of the structure decreased about 700 square feet from 3,528 to 2,880. As we've talked about at the other hearings, this is a project that the neighborhood supports. The, we've submitted numbers of letters of support and the neighbors do feel it's appropriate. And the people who actually live there are in support of it. I think it's difficult to say that this doesn't fit the neighborhood when that's the case. If this project is approved, it is a good result. At the risk of repeating myself, it's a substantial improvement to the property. We have compliance with the flood zone standards, which is required and, and necessary. We have elimination of existing non-conformities and improvement to other non-conformities. We have a more useful home for the owner. And I just don't understand how it could be found to be substantially more detrimental when it meets all these requirements and meets all the, improves all these non-conformities or eliminates them. And the applicants, as I've said, have made many changes and concessions to address these concerns and to, to arrive at the design that's useful and appropriate for the neighborhood. Based on the information provided, I think it's clear that the proposed residence is not substantially more detrimental than what exists and it meets the standards of 243C.
Ken let me know that he is not on the next application or the review draft decision. So he slipped out of the meeting, so he's getting off easy tonight and we'll celebrate him after his final meeting next week. All right, up next. First of all, it's nine twelve, so I'll do a little bit of housekeeping. The board's business ends at nine thirty. I'll go ahead and just make the preemptive motion to continue to ten o'clock. That way we don't interrupt our next hearing or anything after that. So I'll make the motion to continue to ten o'clock. Would anyone like to second that?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. And as always, we don't have to go all the way to ten. So, all right, motion to ten o'clock made by myself, second by James, roll call vote, James.
James Morse.
Thank you, James, Scott.
Otzalenski, hi.
Thank you, Scott, Mary.
Mary Berry, I.
Thank you, Mary, Ed.
Ed Van Hurin, I.
Thank you, Ed, Bob.
Robert Dugan, I.
Thank you, Bob, motion passes unanimously. We will continue the board's business till ten o'clock. Up next, we have application sixteen dash twenty-one, Noonan one eighty-three Surf Drive in Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the non-conforming dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures. And on behalf of the applicant, we do have attorney Clower, so if he could be elevated, please. All right, attorney Clower is getting elevated. I'll just say the board members voting on this one are myself, Ed Van Hurin, Bob Dugan, Mary Berry, and James Morris. Attorney Clower, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, Joseph and Mary Noonan, the owners of one eighty-three Surf Drive. This is our third hearing with you on this matter. So I think you know that we're seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling, which is located in a VE fifteen velocity zone, flood zone. And that location and the scope of the renovations triggered the necessity of coming into compliance with the FEMA standards, meaning we must raise and rebuild the existing structure and elevate it to be two feet above the flood zone elevation, which means elevation seventeen or about twelve feet above the existing grade. Due to our existing non-conformities and proposed lot coverage by structure of twenty-one point eight percent, this does require a special permit under two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E, which we've gone over at length. Since our last meeting, we did submit comparison plans, as was requested, showing the existing and proposed structures, which I'd be happy to share with the board, share with the audience, I suppose. If I may, Mr. Chair. So we showed the existing structure and the proposed structure here. You can see the existing structure is a height of seventeen feet, one inch. We're proposing, and that's above grade, we're proposing a structure that's thirty-nine feet, four inches, again, above, that's, that's based on elevations. It's the base elevation there is five feet, so it's thirty-four feet, six inches is the proposed height. But I thought it was instructive and important to show the proposed structure absent the elevating peers, because that's, that is what's required. We don't have a say in that, we don't have a choice. So what's being proposed, the structure itself, the dwelling portion of that structure is twenty-three feet. That's six feet higher than, than what exists today. We are not taking this house and tripling it or trying to maximize it as much as humanly possible. This is an expansion of this house into a full-time residence is what it's becoming. And as you'll see here, it's a change of six feet. It's not, it is not some astronomical increase. It, I understand why there might be some consternation because of the fact it is required to be put on these peers. But again, we shouldn't be penalized for coming into compliance with the flood zone standards. It should be encouraged. So we did submit those, and I thought that was, that was, you know, pretty illustrative of what's being proposed today. The applicants have worked really hard to design an appropriate home to fit with the neighborhood and to address the concerns of the board and their butter. This project represents an improvement to the property in many ways and meets all the necessary requirements. We have a non-conforming setback that's being eliminated. The front yard setback is being improved from twenty-one feet to twenty-eight feet. The three-foot non-conforming, three-foot contour is being improved. There's no new non-conformity created. We're adding our fifteen hundred square feet of mitigation plantings, which is an improvement both visually and also a better protection of the resource area being Trunk River. It does fit in with the area. We submitted the lot comparison, looking at twenty-six houses within three hundred feet. And of those twenty-six, nine have larger footprint, eight have larger gross floor areas. This is an appropriate design for the area in terms of height and size, and it's in line with all the other homes along Trunk River. The proposed structure is not substantially more detrimental. It's a significant improvement. I think it's also important to look at the changes that the applicants made since last year. There, there's been a lot of them. They've improved the setback from Miss Arkeys to the north, seven feet, from sixteen feet to twenty-three feet. Only ten is required. The setback to the tidal waters of Vineyard Sound has been improved from nine feet to ten. The front yard setback's been improved. It was going to be eliminated at twenty-six, but now it's improved even further at twenty-eight. The building height was reduced by, by six inches. The massing of the building was reduced. The proposed lot coverage by structure was reduced from twenty-three point two percent down to twenty-one point eight percent. And the gross floor area of the structure decreased about seven hundred square feet from thirty-five hundred and twenty-eight to two thousand eight hundred and eighty. As we've talked about at the other hearings, this is a project that the neighborhood supports. The, we've submitted numbers of letters of support, and the neighbors do feel it's appropriate. And the people who actually live there are in support of it. I think it's difficult to say that this doesn't fit the neighborhood when that's the case. If this project is approved, it is a good result. At the risk of repeating myself, it's a substantial improvement to the property. We have compliance with the flood zone standards, which is required and necessary. We have elimination of existing non-conformities and improvement to other non-conformities. We have a more useful home for the owner. And I just don't understand how it could be found to be substantially more detrimental when it meets all of these requirements and meets all the, improves all these non-conformities or eliminates them. And the applicants, as I've said, have made many changes and concessions to address these concerns and to arrive at the design that's useful and appropriate for the neighborhood. Based on the information provided, I think it's clear that the proposed residence is not substantially more detrimental than what exists, and it meets the standards of two forty-three C, two forty, sixty-nine, and two forty-two sixteen. Again, I'd be happy to address any questions that the board might have at this time.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower. We will turn it to board questions. James, anything?
I have no new questions, Mr. Clower, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ed.
I don't have any questions. I think they've done a good job over the last period of time.
All right. Sounds good, thank you, Ed. Bob, anything?
Yeah, just one question, Mr. Clower. So on the lock and comparison worksheet, we have one eighty-one Surf Drive and one eighty-five. On the comparison that you just showed of one, I think of one eighty-one, you show it, the lot coverage would show it as a larger structure as one eighty-five. Is that just a mislabeling on the comparison? Are you muted?
The comparison I was showing was one eighty-three to one eighty-three. And I'd be happy to reshare that.
No, it's okay, you've, you've got, you've got one labeled one eighty-five and, and, and one labeled one eighty-one on A six.
Okay, so I hadn't actually shown that one, so bear with me for one second.
So my question is, once you look at it, is one eighty-one looks like a smaller building than one eighty-five, yet on the lock comparison, one eighty-one says it's four thousand three ninety-two square feet versus the other one, which is twenty-two ninety-two? It might just be a mislabeling, and I'm assuming it may be on the, on the elevation versus the comparison sheet?
So, Mr. Dugan, I'm going to share my screen just to make sure we're talking on the same, same page here. I believe you were talking about this, this page here.
Yeah, so that, so that structure there, the massing seems smaller than the one that's labeled one eighty-five, which I think is, which is that one.
Sure.
But on the, on the comparison sheet, you say that one eighty-five is twenty, just over twenty-two hundred square feet, and one eighty-one is over forty-three hundred. So is that just mislabeled on here or is it on the comparison sheet?
All I can say is on the comparison sheet, we rely on, on the information that is available in the assessors' records. And I've found it's not always entirely accurate. I've found on even projects that we're working on, it'll show a certain gross floor area that's, that's not entirely accurate, but that's the only information we have to go on to prepare these law comparison sheets.
All right, so somebody may have just, just misnumbered, because the one eighty-five, there's no way that's twenty-two hundred square feet. That's got to be around four. I think somebody, something got transposed.
I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not disagreeing. I don't know the answer to it.
No, I don't have any questions. I thank you for doing the, the elevations and the comparisons.
All right, thank you, Bob. Mary, any questions?
I have no questions.
All right. I don't have any questions myself, so we will turn it to public comment. If anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon using the Zoom app, and we will elevate you in a moment. And if there's multiple people out there, just hang tight and we'll get you elevated. All right, if we could elevate Attorney Kirk, please. All right, Attorney Kirk, you've been elevated, so you'll just have to turn on your audio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Can you hear me all right?
We can, welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, a long evening. We've been here on several occasions and you've been very patient. I, I'd just like to summarize a couple of the points that we'd like to leave you with. As you know, I represent Gloria Arcas, who's the immediate butter and the original developer of a lot of the lots, houses, I should say, on Seagull Lane. This permit is, is not to alter or extend the existing structure. It's a request to raise and rebuild, entirely new building. It's a voluntary action to remove a two-bedroom, one-bath structure. No one has challenged the legality of the existing structure, although there are various non-conformities with respect to that. What the applicant is going to do, he removed the building altogether, and he's going to start from scratch to build a new home. And I'd like to point out that I think there's some problems with this, with respect to the status of the lot. And the, the bylaw in, in this particular instance requires you to look at suitability of the lot and its adequacy, including in terms of size. And I think, you know, any other element that relates to locks and zoning. Though I think at the last meeting, I made reference to the fact that the, when this lot was created, it was created with thirty feet of frontage. And at that time, the bylaw had a requirement of fifty feet of frontage. So the, the fact is that the planning board does have the authority to waive strict compliance with frontage for purposes of applying subdivision rules and regulations. But there's a case, it's called Arigo versus the Planning Board of Franklin. Twelve massive fields court eight oh two was decided in nineteen eighty-one. And they were faced with this particular situation. And they, they held that although the planning board may waive its regulations for purpose of frontage, if it approves a lot on a subdivision plan that does not conform to zoning, that does not conform, confer a legal status on that lot. And in order to be buildable, a variance would have to be obtained. Now, in this particular case, we know that a variance was not obtained. At least, there's been no, nothing on the record to suggest that, that a variance was obtained. Nonetheless, the, the owner at the time was able to go ahead and build a house. Now, I'm sure Kevin will point out that under the statute and the bylaw, if it's been there for ten years, it's considered non-conforming. The structure is considered non-conforming, and it's free from any subsequent attack in terms of removal and so forth. And no one ever did try to do that, and that's not what the situation is here. The focus is not on the structure, which is going to be removed. The lot still remains illegal. It was never, it's, it's never obtained any kind of zoning approval for a thirty-foot frontage where the minimum requirement when the lot was created was fifty. The second aspect with respect to this lot is two forty-sixty-eight D two. And since this structure was first constructed, the residence was first built, the town enacted the bylaw with respect to the setback from Fresh River. It's more generally applicable, but in this case, we're talking about the Fresh River. And no new structure could be built within fifty feet. And the, the two forty-sixty-eight D two allows the, the board to grant a special permit. But in no case, and I use those, emphasize, in no case can the construction be any less from the river than thirty feet. And there don't seem to be any exceptions to the, where in no case less than thirty feet. There's no exceptions for extending a non-conforming structure. And there's no exceptions for a raise and replace. So they're, they're starting from scratch. What's there now is a flat slab. They're going to remove the flat slab, they're going to remove the, the very modest structure. And they're going to bring in, and I suppose, pile drive, pilings and footings in the area where it says in no case shall there be less than thirty feet of separation from the river. And they're going to put these pilings in and these footings in to support a two-story structure. And that's a significant disturbance and encroachment, and I suggest a violation of two forty-sixty-eight D two. And the plan seemed to suggest that they already know that there's going to be some problems there. Maybe a breach of the revetment, going to be a need for some dewatering, an encroachment in that area from the river itself. So, the question is whether or not it is in harmony with the spirit and intent of the bylaw. There's two obvious violations where it's not in harmony, not only with the spirit, but with the actual letter of the bylaw. The, on two forty-sixteen, there's talk about impact on the visual character of the neighborhood. And I don't think there's going to be any question that there's going to be a negative impact on the visual character of the neighborhood. You see from Kevin's visuals, the comparisons, the elevations at, at the end of Seagull Lane now, from the inside, the entire character's going to change. We're going to have a veritable three-story wall across the southerly end of Seagull Lane. That's within the neighborhood, and we've talked about what is a neighborhood. I know that the applicant wants to go outside the neighborhood. He wants to go on the other side of Fresh River. He wants to go on the Surf Drive. But this is Seagull Lane. And from the outside, the same holds true. The Vista along Mill Road and Surf Drive will now be dominated by a cluster of oversized structures. And that, that corner, if you will, is going to be changed entirely. And there's a little bit of a domino effect, I think we see coming along, because the record reflects that some people who are in support of this have acknowledged that they intend to do the same thing. So the old Seagull neighborhood basically will be gone, and this will be the tipping point. So we don't think that you could find that this is not substantially more detrimental. And we don't think that this lot is adequate in size or suitable for a project of this size. And so that's, that's why on the app that my client were asking that you deny the application.
Thank you, Attorney Kirk. Any questions for Attorney Kirk from the board?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead, James.
Mr. Kirk, I've, I've read your submissions. I certainly understand the argument. My, my question for you is, would you agree that there are certain houses in the Seagull neighborhood that have gone up in recent years?
Yes, there, there are some houses that I don't have all, all the elevations in front of me, but there, there has been some, some increase in, I think, in particularly fifteen Seagull Lane, which is to the rear.
The north side, yes.
Very large structure.
And was that driven by the VE fifteen being in the flood zone, the FEMA regulation, sir?
I don't know the history of that application, Mr. Morris.
Did your client make any objections when the, the height of that structure was increased?
I'm not aware that she participated in any of those proceedings.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk.
All right, any other board members for Attorney Kirk? All right, seeing none. Attorney Kirk, thank you for your time tonight.
And thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, not seeing anyone else for public comment, so I suppose back to the board or Attorney Clower, if you'd like to address anything from Attorney Kirk?
If I could, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, I think we addressed a lot of this at, at the last hearing. But Mr. Attorney Kirk's assertions about the lot are incorrect. The lot was created pursuant to a nineteen fifty-one subdivision plan, which is approved by the planning board. It was a true subdivision plan, not an A and R plan. So it was reviewed and approved as the zoning. And there are portions of the property added to what is now Seagull Lane. That's where that hammerhead turnaround came from. There, the subdivision plan shows a dashed line creating that, the extension of that road. However, in nineteen fifty-two, the minimum lot size was increased to ten thousand square feet. And the revised bylaw at the time said all lots duly recorded prior to the date of approval by the Attorney General, which have an area of seventy-five hundred square feet or more, may be used without the necessity of applying to the deals. There was no minimum frontage requirement set forth in that exception. And one eighty-three Surf Drive was built in nineteen fifty-two, shortly after that change came down. As I noted in my correspondence to the board and Attorney Kirk today in response to his email, the Arigo case is simply not applicable. It was for the creation of a new subdivision plan. That's not what we're doing here. We have an existing non-conforming dwelling and lot. And that non-conforming status provides a protection under both Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-eight, section six, and chapter two forty-three C of the Arizona bylaw. And Attorney Kirk brought up two forty-sixty-eight D two, which is the setback to the river. That would be true, this was a new structure. We have an existing non-conforming structure. We're taking that non-conformity, we're improving it. It's, that is true, you know, it is the case with any non-conforming setback that you wouldn't be able to create a new structure there. But if you have an existing non-conformity, it can be, can be altered pursuant to two forty-three C. This plan's been reviewed by conservation. It's been approved twice, actually. And I think it's worth noting that we can't cherry pick the neighborhood. I'm not, you know, in no application do we ever say it's only these houses, because they're the closest. But even if we wanted to cherry pick, if you look at the closest houses to this, it, it is in, it is very much in line with what's being proposed. And following on Mr. Morris's line of questioning, I think it's important to note that all the houses on, on Seagull Lane and on Surf Drive have been built in compliance with the flood zone standards in effect at the time they were created. So, you know, our existing house at one eighty-three Surf Drive was built at this elevation, because that's what was required. Yeah, I think Miss Arkeys's house is, is elevated certainly above where this is. I think if you look at any of the houses on Surf Drive or fifteen Seagull, those were elevated to meet the flood zone compliance requirements in fact at that time. Like in twenty fourteen, these changed, maybe became more severe. And we're simply responding to that. If we didn't have to go up twelve feet, we certainly wouldn't be going up twelve feet. But we don't have a choice in that matter. So what we're actually doing is increasing the size of the house by six feet. We can't be penalized for going up those twelve feet that we are required to by, by building code and by the FEMA guideline.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower. Any follow-up questions from the board? Anyone at all, not seeing any? All right. Board have enough to close?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to close.
All right, motion to close by Bob. Seconded by Ed, thank you, Ed, roll call vote, James.
James Morse.
Thank you, James, Ed.
Ed Van Hurin, I.
Thank you, Ed, Mary.
Mary Berry, I.
Thank you, Mary, Bob.
Robert Dugan, I.
Thank you, Bob, and TJ Hurry, I. So the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. Oh, the board like to proceed. Would you like to have a conversation first before coming to a vote or?
Why not?
Why not? You want me to start, I can start us off. So a lot of the focus regarding this application has been surrounding the neighborhood. We heard through testimony that neighborhood is undefined in our bylaws, and I think it should remain that way. Each application is different, so when it comes to evaluating the neighborhood, obviously every neighborhood is different as well. At least for myself, I take into consideration, obviously, the zoning, the area of town where the project's being proposed, what the houses around the, the application look like. And in this case, obviously, you have to take into consideration the FEMA regulations. Speaking of the FEMA regulations, I was pretty new on this board. When they, the newest ones came into effect, I think it was two thousand fourteen. And I realized pretty early on that they were going to be a major issue for this town. Obviously, it's a public policy argument. You want to improve neighborhoods if you're going up. And obviously, that protects the homes from any stormwater. Uh, then obviously that protects the homes from, uh, any storm waters, anything like that. Uh, but you do have that discrepancy where someone in the neighborhood has to be the first one to go, and then eventually bit by bit, uh, over the years, other houses will go, will go up as well, so I think that's the case that we have uh, in this immediate area. Uh, so I cast a bit of a wide net when it does come to defining what a neighborhood is, I don't hold it exclusively uh, to Seagull versus, uh, the Surf Drive. Uh, I'm kinda going out a little bit. More, more in line with what the applicant is, uh, suggesting what the neighborhood is. Uh, when it does come to these projects concerning FEMA regulations, uh, the board has seen a trend in recent years of applicants asking for the maximum, just maxing out lot coverage height, uh, whatever. Um, I think the board can and should encourage negotiation when it comes to these projects. Um, I think it's well within the board's rights if someone's applying through the special permit process. Uh, and you can make the argument that that's what this applicant has done. Uh, I know they previously applied to the board and they withdrew, but when you take into consideration what was originally proposed versus, uh, what's proposed now, uh, they did make some improvements to the project in terms of, uh, the bulk calculations, the size, location of the house, improving a little bit on the non-conformities, uh, and even eliminating a couple of them. Uh, so, when I take into consideration all that, I know at the end of the, the first time we took up this matter, I did indicate that, uh, I would be in, I would be in favor of the project if they reduced it or, and, or improved it slightly. Uh, so they would have my vote tonight. Anyone else?
Yeah, so I'll, I guess I'll chime in, so it's, uh, regarding neighborhood, so I, I guess I would use a different definition myself for neighborhood. Uh, the only access to this property is from Seagull Lane, there is no access to this entire area from Surf Drive. In fact, it's very unique that this property has a Surf Drive address since it has absolutely no frontage or connection to Surf Drive. The closest house to this property is actually the house that you have to back into to try to get out of the driveway of this property, there is a very treacherous access in and out, and it just happens that's the way they decided to break up the law. That closest house is a very similar small ranch to this one. Isn't one of these large monoliths that have been built like on the corner of Surf Drive? In fact, if you look at the house directly in front of this, on Surf Drive and take the Surf Drive argument, even that property, when you look at the comparison that was set with elevation, has less bulking and massing than this one. And that is one of the properties directly on Surf Drive. Um, that property's on an eleven thousand square foot lot. This one is on a seventy-six hundred square foot lawn. I brought things up before regarding lots. Smaller lots in these areas with these rebuilds have more impact than a larger lot with these structures. Um, comment was made that you don't have a choice, they have to go on piers. Well, that's if you decide you wanna do as much of a renovation to meet flood code, and if you do, yes, it does have to go on piers. Once it's on piers, you have an emphasis on the size and mass automatic just by the piers, you can't control it, but visually it's always there. Many of these homes going up, they make the argument that we then have to go more than what the existing house is because it isn't worth it for us monetarily to do that. It may not be, but this board isn't to look at what the monetary issues are on whether they need, wanna put a larger house or use or not. This larger house still has the access issues for the lot. I do think it does not, it doesn't fit in with neighborhood character. Again, my definition of the neighborhood from the Seagull Lane side, the only access, when you drive in from Mill Road, the houses that have been elevated on Surf Drive stand out massively compared to all the surroundings. And even though one house doesn't, we look at things individually, I don't think it means all the homes have to do it. I wasn't on the projects on Surf Drive, I can tell you if I was on the one on the corner of Surf Drive, I would never be in favor of something so large in that area. The comments regarding Tru-, well, actually he said Trunk River, it was just a misstatement, but the Herringbrook. All the houses on the Herringbrook on both sides aren't of this height. It isn't all of the properties, yeah, there are a few properties here and there, but it isn't all of the properties. The, um, I don't feel the lot is suitable or adequate for this size of a structure. Um, I know the members visited the site. So, anyone that pulled in that driveway has to know, the only way to get out is to pull into the driveway next door. There is no other way to get out, you'd have to slowly back down the street, you don't have any visual, you don't have any visual sightlines to back down the street. We were told through testimony during one of our meetings by an Abadar that they were in favor, like Mister Kirk said, because they wanna do the same thing. That seems to be the property with the address they gave, which is the one that you're backing into. That may make the area harder to deal with, with site access. Um, I don't have any issues with the Rego case. I think they may have broken up the lots differently back then, they may not have, you know, qualified to what they were supposed to, but either way, the property there is existing, it's in the, the spot, they have every right to apply for a permit. But I am just, I'm just not in favor of this plan, and I understand that they did some changes, I do not find them significant changes. Uh, when we had our last hearings on this project, um, a lot of the com- comments, the negative, were very specific. We were looking for very substantial substantive changes to height enassing. You compare this to the one that they planned before, you do not have significant changes. You have a minimum, I think about six inches even on the height. So, I'm all for upgrading things for flood zones. Um, but I think we need to try to keep some of these characters of the neighborhoods, which are the tourist access to this town. And these smaller lots all happen to be on main scenic drives, you know, Surf Drive, Falmouth Heights, smaller dense areas, and when you do these rebuilds on larger homes and more bedrooms, you're gonna have more occupancy and more use, that's gonna actually put more use on the lot. These small lots can't take that type of use. Uh, Mister Kirk made some arguments regarding the pilings. I have some concerns about the pilings, but I'll leave that up to the people that deal with the pilings and conservation. But there were notations that there may be issues with, you know, with the, um, abutments and stuff on that river. And I understand they're not coming any closer, but some of the things are in different locations. Um, the hedge that's on the property isn't even part of this property when you go there, your lot lines are actually inside it. The hedge line makes you think that the property's larger, but it isn't. Uh, so for those reasons, I would not be in favor, I was hoping they would come in with a, with a significantly, uh, changed structure, I am very surprised they didn't come in with anything smaller or even similar to the one directly in front of it, because by their own comparison they submitted to this board, then this new structure is larger than that one. So I'm, I'm, I'm just not in favor of this plan.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else?
I'll just weigh in, I'm, I'm in favor of the project for the reasons stated by you, Mister Chairman.
All right, thank you, James. Uh, Ed, how do you feel?
As I stated last time, I'm all for it.
You're okay.
I think it's the end of the, um, they, they put their effort into it, and I think they did a fair job, and say, go ahead with it.
All right, sounds good. Mary, how do you feel?
I guess I'm just ready to vote.
Don't, don't care to weigh in? All right. All right, um, hmm. Just the five of us, okay. Uh, I would make the motion to approve the project with conditions then.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, James, all right. Motion to approve the project made by myself, seconded by James, roll call vote, James?
James Moore, side.
All right. I'm, I'm sorry, um, what am I doing? Findings, right? Right, findings, sorry, it's getting late, uh.
Wait a minute, don't, don't you want the board, oh, you're gonna, aren't, don't you want the board to vote before you do your findings?
Can I ask a point of clarification?
So you asked, so Mister Chairman, you asked, you asked for a motion, you made a motion to approve, it was seconded by James. We normally go through a roll call.
Sorry, my, my computer just got very choppy with, with the internet connection, I only heard a fraction of that.
Motion, you Mister Chairman, to approve, seconded by me, my suggestion would be a roll call vote, and then afterwards, conditions and findings.
Very good, all right, so we'll do that then.
There's a question, I think, before you call up the question from
Yeah, I just, I just have a, a, a quick question for clarification purposes.
Sure.
Um, if a motion to approve doesn't pass, I don't think that is a denial, that would still provide us the opportunity to withdraw, am I correct in that? Or, or seeking continuance, or? Because not knowing where the vote is, I'm hesitant to go into a vote that could result in a two-year time bar. Um, so if the motion is to approve, and that doesn't pass, and we still have an opportunity to, to, I'd withdraw or continue, um, that, that's fine, I just wanna know that going in.
So Mister Chairman, just for clarification, so we have closed the hearing, and we have a current motion on the table. Um, at this point, the applicant shouldn't be involved at all after the deliberation process. Normally, normally, once you do the motion and you have the second, most cases go for roll call, and then you can go through findings and conditions. But at this point, even for basic procedure, once it's closed, and once you've done motions, um, the applicants actually should even be, shouldn't even be elevated in the discussion section, they should be, um, in general in the waiting room.
You know, but we talked about this at the last hearing, because, you, you know, I, I had this concern, and Chairman Hari mentioned that if, uh, after the discussion, if, if, you know, we'd have an opportunity to request withdrawal or continuance, uh, because I think in fairness to the applicant, you know, it, it's a, it's a significant penalty for a denial, so I'm simply asking for a clarification.
I, 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 I understand Mister Clower, but again, for the chairman, the, the hearing is closed. Once we close these hearings, there is no more participation by applicants or members of the public. It's discussions with the board, I'm guessing what Mister Clower might have referenced was many times in the past, you have polled the board. The issue that we have gotten, when you've had discussions and polling of the board, is that it gives the appearance, depending on what the applicant thinks, that they shop votes. They look at changes in, um, board consistency, people coming in and out, and that's always been an issue. And that's why, once you close hearings, you don't allow further participation. We did have a full discussion um, on any comments that, you know, people have made. You didn't go right to something else, then we closed the hearing, then you made a motion to approve. So, I think it's inappropriate for any applicant or any member of the public to be included in any active part of this meeting, once we have made a close of the hearing, and we've gone on to motions, it just complicates the matters immensely, does not help the board, and quite honestly, I do not think it's legal procedure. So, I would state that we have closed the hearing, we've gone on to motions, and at this point, we take a, a roll call to see whether the motion passes or not, if it passes, we go to findings and conditions like we usually do. Um, if it doesn't pass, it's a denial.
I, I don't, I don't know that that's accurate, uh, Mister Dugan, uh, I think, uh, I think a failure to approve is not necessarily denial, a motion to deny is a denial.
Mister Clower, again, again to the chair, this is not time for applicants, we have closed the hearing. And this is on anybody that applies to these hearings. This board has had the situation go on and on for a year, where we get to sections like this, and then we have applicants or other people that wanna sit and comment on what our deliberation process is. Now, whether it's a denial or not, the motion either passes or it doesn't. But at this point, I wanna know from the chair, the hearing is closed. Why are applicants being able to chime in? I mean, we, we would be getting comments from the public at this case. You know, we've had these, we had a previous application for months. They did a withdrawal and came back, we've had this application for months. And we're still getting, after we've made a legal vote to close, applicants trying to chime in and find out, you know, what the situation is or what can change, I, you know, the board has to start sticking with what our procedures are. And it's, it's not complicated, it's not, you know, it has nothing to do with this Clower, this application, it's in general. I, I've never understood, even in the hearing process that we have, once the, the applicant or the abuders have made their comments, I know this is Zoom and it's complicated, they should all be put in the waiting room, they were supposed to be doing that in the last hearing, and I know something wasn't done with IT. But this isn't for discussion with applicants or the public, this is a discussion for us. And right now, we have a motion on the table to approve. We have a second by mem- by Member Morse. We should be doing a roll call at this point, and see if it passes, if it passes, we go on to findings and conditions.
Th- thank you for all that, Bob, while you were saying all that, I was rifling through our procedures, um, but you're right, the hearing was closed. No more testimony would be taken after that point, we made a motion, uh, to approve, and we would carry through with that motion with a roll call vote. And if it passes, then we move on to findings and conditions, if not, uh, then I suspect, like I say at the beginning of every hearing, uh, a split vote would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. So we made a motion, or I made a motion to approve with conditions, uh, was made by myself and seconded by James, so we'll carry through with the vote, James?
James Moore, side.
Thank you, James, uh, Ed.
Hey, thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, Mary?
Mary, Barry, not, no.
Thank you, Mary, Bob?
Robert Dugan, nay.
And TJ Hurry, I, so it would be three to two, and that would be a failure to carry. Think I had that right? All right. Uh, and Noreen, I'll just defer to you in terms of, uh, the actual filing itself, do you need anything beyond the board's vote?
So, that's a good question, normally the boards that I've worked with in the past required a unanimous vote, um, so here where you have a split decision, but you're essentially denying. That's a good question as to what you're going to include in the record.
And I'm looking through our procedures, seeing if there's any guidance at all. I'm not seeing anything in terms of just how to, of, of what actually goes into the decision itself, but you do have the vote. Maybe before you file with the town clerk, Noreen, we can, you can just look into that a little bit more, just making sure that we have a proper decision on record. we have a proper decision on record. All right.
Will do.
All right, thank you, Noreen.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Yep, yep, it is ten o'clock. All right.
Grudgingly moved to continue our business to ten fifteen.
All right, thank you, James. Um, motion was made by James, it was seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, James?
James Moore's side.
Thank you, James. Ed?
Ed, thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Thank you, Mary. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Thank you, Bob. Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Thank you, Scott, and TJ Hurry, aye. So it passes unanimously, and the board's business is to continued to ten fifteen tonight. All right, uh, moving on, are you supposed to voting the minutes of May twentieth, twenty twenty-one? So everyone had a chance to review those? Have, have, have we gotten those? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm confusing my dates. Have we gotten those?
You know, I have to admit, there have been so many minutes, I am not sure which day. Anymore. I'm pretty sure that those.
So, could we, could we just defer the?
That's fine.
Yeah, cuz I, I, I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we have them. All right, so we'll table that for next time. Reviewing the draft decision for application twenty-two dash twenty-one, Messner, twelve Vernon, Avon, Falmouth. Vote anticipated. Voting members on this project are myself, Ed Van Kuren, Scott Zalinski, Mary Berry, and James Morse. All right, has everyone had a chance to review the draft? Uh, so Noreen, um, correctly pointed out in the emails, which I neglected. Uh, it slipped my mind during the last hearing regarding the fence and the pool. Um, that's slightly beyond the purview of this board. It's, it's up to the building commissioner just to uh, determine what's appropriate there. And had a quick question. Noreen, um, I should have highlighted it or something. Uh, regarding the pool equipment itself, I thought the board was indicating that we wanted, um, basically some sort of shed, a, a structure almost. And I think was the decision indicating some, something else, like a, like a surrounding or something like that?
So, I guess I'm not hundred percent clear where I don't have the transcript in front of me. Um, let me take a look here and see.
I, I was imagining something more enclosed rather than.
Yeah, I, so I, I know that the project engineer did update the plan to move the shed to a conforming location, move the hot tub to a conforming location. Show the location of the pool equipment. Uh, the information that was provided to me was that, with that cha- updated plan, that the pool equipment was going on crushed stone.
Okay.
So not to jump in, but at the, at the last hearing, because, yeah, I'm not voting on it, but I did ask the question about the enclosure, and it was also my understanding, they mentioned that they could enclose it in a structure, you know, similar like a shed would be, that would completely encompass the equipment, and the applicant seemed to be amenable to it. So I don't know if that puts any light on it, but I, I think that's what they were talking about. And then if he does that, did that change where he was amenable to it? Once that's there, do we need them to adjust any of the lot coverages to include the enclosure over the pool equipment?
Right, so I guess what I would say to you is where they're showing fencing around crushed stone, that would not constitute a structure. If you intended that they house pool equipment within a shed, that would add structure to the lot coverage, and I guess that would be two things. One would be whether they have the capacity within the lot total, you know, for the lot coverage by structure, to comply with that without exceeding the twenty-five percent. And then I guess the other part that I would put to the board is, there's nothing within the bylaw as direction to a regular applicant looking to install a pool, that they are required to house pool equipment, or that pool equipment is subject to a setback. So I guess the other part I would put to the board is that conditions that you put on a special permit should not be more difficult to comply with than what someone could do as of right, because this, this pool installation complies as a structure and exceeds the required setbacks.
So I guess why, I, I guess just a quick comment to that, cuz, cuz I understand just what you're saying, but my issue is again, another process issue. We had an open meeting with abutters that did have issues in this case, and some people that I think they have been in support. And the applicant agreed to house the equipment, and the discussion wasn't, I'll put a fence around it. So what I worry about is if you change it to I put a fence around it, and the applicant at the meeting accepted it was being housed, it's, it has it, it has an issue with the, with the hearing itself, and I know what you're saying, because I even brought up the question.
What about, what about increasing the non-conformity, Bob? Is it in our purview to, to?
No.
To get to, to increase the non-conformity?
We can't increase.
If it adds structure, lot coverage to it, then we're forcing in essence that, that, where we're. More non-conforming.
No, I understand. So at the last hearing, I brought up the issue that if you encompass it, it might check, change lot coverage, and you might have to get rid of a shed so that you comply. And they seemed very, they all seemed very amenable. I mean, Tom seemed very amenable, and the other person. We already knew we were gonna get into a lot coverage issue. Um, it seemed quite clear that Mr. Bunker knew we were getting, gonna get into a lot coverage issue. Um, I think people had, you know, there were two concerns from even watching the hearing. One was make sure the shed's at least fifty feet back if you don't get rid of it, because we can't give a permit if it's within that fifty feet. And the other issue was housing the equipment because of noise. So if the housing of the equipment put them over lot coverage, they would have to get rid of the shed. That would allow them to be under the lot coverage. Um, we didn't have new lot coverage calculations. They didn't really kinda know what they were gonna do. Same is situation like the fence. I completely understand where the fence is under building department or health or wherever it needs to be. Um, they basically just, just said that they would completely enclose the pool, going back to the original plan of the fence just surrounding the pool area. So we didn't have to get into any other issues where he was thinking he could use the stockade. So whatever this plan is, when that last meeting ended, the fencing was directly around the pool like the previous plan he had, and they were planning on housing the pool equipment, and if it didn't work, the shed would disappear.
Explain that that, that falls under the building commissioner, the fencing.
Well, with, how the fencing is locked up and the height and stuff, but on the plan, at the last meeting, he said, I will re-surround the pool like the original one, which I don't see there was an issue with. You can put an alarm on it. Um, but that's what his agreement was at the last meeting. So if you have a public hearing and they've agreed to this stuff, and everyone says okay, and then all of a sudden it comes time for a decision, and now we're changing how you handle the pool equipment, and now we're putting the, we're moving the shed back fifty feet, but now that's throwing over lot coverage. Um, the only way we can fix it is get rid of the shed and require the housing on the pool equipment.
Well, I think that, you know, if it is necessary to quote, house the pool equipment.
He was agreeable to it. It wasn't even a question. He said, we'll house.
So it, it could be that, you know, that lock coverage would still be under the twenty-five percent.
So what you could say is if you house the pool equipment and the lock coverage goes in excess of twenty-five percent, then the shed would have to be removed. But they would have to get, but they would have to give you, i- administratively, they would have to give you an updated lot coverage calculation. So you would actually make the decision. If they were over, the shed would go. If they're under, everything could stay.
There is, there is another possibility, which we have used in other communities, which is you install fencing, and then you face the fencing with sound absorptive material. And that will lower the, any decibel output of pool equipment, which would be, what I would be understanding, would be the issue to the abutters. And you might get a better quality that way.
See, I think, I think that's a, I think that's a good use of it, and that might be a better way to work it. The problem is, that's not what we discussed during a hearing at all. We discussed housing it. And if you're gonna do a change, or they wanna amend it, maybe they could come back, but we'd have to have a hearing to amend it, because you already know that you've got attorneys representing people next door. Um, and it seems they were getting ready, you know, his argument seemed that he was looking at possible appealable decision. You don't wanna give, um, you know, you wanna write your decisions as tight as you can without giving them more issues to bring up. But you could easily handle it that way. You could say the pool equipment is to be housed inside of a structure is if the str- if the lock cover, if the adjusted lock coverage goes over twenty-five percent, then the shed on the property that was moved back fifty feet would have to be removed and not replaced. That way, if it's under, they keep it. If it's over, then they get rid of it. But you, you, you can't make changes to items in a decision after a hearing's closed and the public's not involved anymore. We'd have to reopen up again.
Yeah, but I, Bob, I agree. I think that's a cleaner way of dealing with it, especially with an eye on.
And you could do it administratively with lot coverage, and then the only issue we get it, if it's over and they don't wanna get rid of the shed, they come back. I mean, I'd get rid of the shed and not come back.
Mary?
Yeah, I, I have a question for you, TJ.
What's up?
We received a, an email about the lot coverage, which included a section from the bylaw about pervious materials. And it's two forty sixty-nine maximum lot coverage. And in reading this, I, I was quite amazed, frankly. At this section that was highlighted, that is a footnote three.
Foot, yes, footnote three, yes.
It's not contained at all in, in the chart.
Right, so it looks like, um, just explaining for everyone, it looks like some sort of Scribner's error or something. There's, there's the footnote three, but it's not supported within, um, that graphic for the maximum percent of lock coverage.
Well, actually, if you read it, it says lot coverage at the beginning under A, section A of that section. Um, lot coverage shall not exceed the following, except as provided in C, and C talks about commercial the business. So that isn't part of an exclusion, and there is nothing in this chart with a three. So the fact that people have said that the building commissioner can make that determination, that's not in what we have in our zoning bylaws. So, I think it's up to somebody to, uh, prove that that's that's allowable. So I, I think, you know, it's up to you, but the question talks speaks to lot coverage.
Right, right.
And as it's been pointed out, we, we've closed the hearing, but this footnote three isn't anywhere, so it's meaningless. It's, it's a, an orphan footnote.
Well, well said. Yes, it is. It is. Um, uh, I agree. I, I would.
And I must admit, I was surprised in, when I got this and, and looked at it.
Oh, absolutely, me too, because it's, it's, uh, it's there in black and white, and then there's how Falmouth practices the actual issue. Um, so I don't know if it was a, I don't know if it got dropped off during, um, a revision of the bylaws, and speaking of, maybe it might be a good thing to bring up, uh, with the bylaw committee if it hasn't already been addressed. Um, but that, that is something that needs to be addressed. I would hate to fault the applicant, um, tonight for that issue, especially if Falmouth's been, uh, continuing on.
But how do you know? How do you know what in the world that was all about?
You, you really don't.
And I don't see. I mean, that's, my understanding of what we're supposed to do is in, we're supposed to apply the zoning bylaws.
Exactly, exactly.
What we have in front of us, that was provided by, uh, Noreen, it, it doesn't follow what people mentioned in the hearing.
All right, uh, we are at ten fifteen, so we would need to vote to go on a little bit longer. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to go to ten thirty.
I was muted, sorry. I'll say, okay, good.
Thank you, Scott. Motion to continue to ten thirty, uh, made by Scott, seconded by Bob. Roll call vote, James?
James Moore's side.
Thank you, James. Ed?
Ed, thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry.
Thank you, Mary. Scott?
Scott Zalinski.
Thank you, Scott. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Thank you, Bob, and TJ Hurry, aye. So the board's business is continued to ten thirty. Um, moving on with our discussion.
I've got a fair, a very quick question to the administrator. Um, I know how we've always handled this in the past. When I joined the board, I never looked at the bylaw. I was actually just told, you know, pervious, don't worry about it. Um, the situation that came up when Mr. Kirk brought this up, uh, was surprising. My question is, if it isn't stated in the bylaw the way it's supposed to be, can we decide to do it in a different way, or does that have to be changed in advance? And I know it affects a lot of stuff, but, um, everything I thought with, with the state is the only thing we could we could do decisions on had to be directly from the bylaw, and if it wasn't stated in there, um, we couldn't use it. So does this really put a you know, spin on everything, because it's, it's, it's directly an error unless, unless if it was a Scribner's, the only I could think of is town councilor, somebody would have to go back on town meeting whenever this was done to find out if there was an actual vote that gave this, um, authority decision to the building commissioner, and if they did at that point, we'd have something to back up on, but um, if somebody just appeals at this point and says you don't have the right to consider it lot coverage cuz it's pervious, because it doesn't state it in the bylaw, what's the defense?
TJ, if I, I just, just that we find out from the town clerk, who has the official version of the zoning bylaws, if this is a Scribner's error, a printing error, if the, a footnote just didn't get printed, I'm gonna guess that somewhere along the line, the, the footnote was there. Or else, there, yeah, there could be a lot of decisions at risk, subject to appeals and challenges.
Very true.
So, so I think before filing, whatever you guys are gonna file, that you should get that from the clerk, because if not, it's being appealed, that it's not in the bylaw, and if that is ever decided that way, uh, we've got decisions all over town that we haven't used that. Um, I don't think it's smart to file the decision without that answer from somebody.
All right, just to add to our discussion here, um, it has been the practice, and I have gone around and interviewed multiple parties to make sure when I started with Falmouth, that I was acting in concert and in line with practices. And I was told that when there is pervious surfaces, that that does not count toward lot coverage by parking and paving. And that includes gravel, that includes, includes seashell, et cetera, and the board has seen this through multiple properties. People will choose to put in a, a stone or a gravel or a seashell driveway so that they're not increasing their lot coverage by total structure, park, and paving.
And that's the same thing I understood when I joined the board. The thing is, I never looked where it said that. I just assumed they all knew it was written somewhere. Um, I'm hoping it's just a Scribner's error, and it's a quick check with the clerk. Um, I'm hoping it's just a Scribner's error, and it's a quick check with the clerk, because that straightens everything else, but if it isn't, then we do not have the right to say it doesn't go towards lot coverage unless, until they change it. So I'm just saying, if it's a Scribner's error, and I hope it is, before whatever gets filed, uh, better find out from the clerk, because if it isn't a Scribner's error, and there's nothing in this bylaw that says it does not count towards lot coverage, then, um, we can't say, you know, we can't say it doesn't. So we have to base it on a bylaw, we don't have one right now.
So you're, you're discussing the gravel area, and you're asking whether the gravel area.
What you sent, the information that you sent out, that showed the one, two, and three notations?
Right.
Number three notates pervious surface, but they never applied it to the actual item. It doesn't say, it says here's a note, but we're not telling you where it applies. And we're saying, because it doesn't appear above, it doesn't apply to any of those, and that's what we needed to apply to. So I'm just saying, go for a Scribner's error, but get the clerk to check it, and maybe it was just dropped off. If not, maybe there was a vote, and they didn't include it, but we need to have that in there, because we can't base a decision on something that we're not counting towards lot coverage, if the bylaw that we can go by says it does.
Right, but again, now, this, this is a question related to total lot coverage, correct?
Yeah, and I'm just saying, we can't make our, base our decisions on what we think the building commissioner can say, we have to base it on what the bylaw says, and if the bylaw says it doesn't count a lot coverage, we're all set. If it, if the way they've written it, it says it does, then the argument on a lot of these properties is correct, a lot, like a home like this tonight would be way over. So it's best.
Going on the premise of, of when it was a, a, uh, an inn, or with the two, with the two parking space argument, how you, how are you calculating the, the overage on the parking?
They, they have all, as far as I know, Scott, everyone has always gone, but what the building commissioner said, that there was a bylaw that said pervious didn't count, so if you had a patio, we never counted it. But I think everybody.
Where were you getting your overage on the calculation, on the?
Oh, so, so, so the, so the.
It's two parking spaces that was, that was.
No, actually, the way they've written this up, that entire patio in the back of that property, that big patio they're sticking everything on,
Yeah.
The way this is written up in the bylaw with that error, we would have to count that as coverage.
But we're talking about gravel. You, you, you and Mary are talking about gravel.
No, it's a paved, it's a paved.
It's the paved surface, it's the patio. The bylaw, what, what I thought the bylaw said was, if we had patios, and we didn't count them towards lot coverage, because we had pervious sections of them. Unfortunately, the, the section doesn't say that, it says we do have to.
Then I suggest we take, we take, uh, uh, Mr. Morse's suggestion, because sitting here.
I agree, I think that's, I think that's a great suggestion, have them figure it out.
I, I would just point out that the, uh, engineer has provided on his plan that that stone patio is included in total lot coverage.
And I asked him on the record to get it on the record. I asked if all his calculations were correct. And he stated, yes.
Right.
You'll recall.
Mary, what's that bylaw, oh, Noreen, what's the bylaw number, two forty, what?
Sixty-nine. Uh, we do also have confirmation from the homeowner that they are willing to house the pool equipment. To my reading.
So the, so the section, so the section that we have is the note on the bottom, it says excluded from lot coverage are materials considered pervious by the building commissioner, including but not limited to pervious concrete, pavers, and similar material. The problem is, they didn't take that footnote and apply it to any of the lot coverages above. They did on number one, and they did on number two, because they didn't apply number three in the book, we can't consider pervious surfaces as not part of it, we can't exclude it.
I don't know, I, I guess what I would say to you is, I understand your struggles, but I also would say that the town has had longstanding practices about how they're reviewing things.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what the town has been doing. If nobody, if we have a bylaw, we have to go by the bylaw.
Maybe it's a quick fix, but I would go with what.
I would just suggest, TJ, that we should hold off on further, you know, further approval of this until we have it figured out.
James's suggestion, if we could check in with town clerk and try to nail down what, where, what happened to that footnote three, and then we can push off, uh, uh, vote anticipated on this for next, next meeting.
All right, you also are going, I don't have the file in front of me, but the other part is that uh, you do have a specific limit of time to make a decision on a special permit.
Mm-hmm. And.
I don't have the file date, Bob's muted, so.
Yeah.
You're still muted, Bob.
Muted, Bob.
I love my mute button, uh, so ninety days would be, uh, August fourth.
All right, so there's time.
Twenty-one. Yeah, so we have time.
Do we want Frank to weigh in on this issue, TJ?
Why not?
Yeah, why?
I mean, I'm trying to make this complicated, I just want to make sure this is nailed down properly.
You want to be able to defend it if it's appealed on that issue.
Exactly.
That's true. Noreen, could you reach out to Frank about this?
Yes.
Appreciate it. All right, so we'll push that off, uh, till next time, live in person, June seventeenth.
Are, are we still doing masks, you know? In the town hall, have they decided?
As of today, that is what's going on, as of next week, I guess I will tell you to stay tuned.
Okay.
Okay, so if it helps at all, I am not going to be reading these files with a mask on. Just because it has been stuff like that, I have an issue, so if that decision comes up, someone else is going to have to handle the files.
All right. Uh, one thing before we all go, I just, as everyone knows, the governor's order suspending the open meeting law and Zoom and all that, that's, uh, that's going away next week, next Tuesday, I think, which allows us to meet live in person, which is amazing. Uh, but before we go tonight, I just want to say thank you to Noreen, thank you to Ashley, thank you to Justin, and everyone else at, uh, the Falmouth IT Department, who has been helping us out for the past, what, fourteen months on Zoom, and, uh, everyone at FCTV, and, uh, I always say my friends at FCTV, because I'm not at town hall, I can't see who's in the, uh, control, control room, so thank you to everyone for all their hard work, uh, especially Noreen and Ashley, I know Ashley's been driving around town, dropping us, dropping off, uh, all our materials, that's going above and beyond her pay, pay grade for sure, so.
We lucked out with the best staff.
We sure did. So to, to everyone, thank you, and board, and board members too, I know it's not easy, it's almost ten thirty, most of our meetings have gone very late, and I know our beds are only a few short feet away, but, uh, it, it does grind. Yeah, it does wear on you a little bit, meeting this late, so thank you to everyone. And, uh, Theodore, the cat, for a cat, he learned a lot about pre-existing non-conforming structures, uh, a ton the past twelve, fourteen months, so I don't know if he's looking forward to me going back live in person, we'll, we'll find out soon, but he might be.
He could always bring him to Cat Carrier.
We, we could, I could get one.
Bring him in, mask on.
So, thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone, board members, staff members, Falmouth IT, FCTV, everyone, thank you very, very much for, for everything. All right, anything else? Yep.
I think, yeah, Ed put it in right away, good night, that's the best thing.
Good night, see everyone live in person, June seventeenth at Falmouth Town Hall. Good night.
The recording has stopped.